Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. City manager, Isaiah Hughley. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. John Anchor, District 9. At-large counsel, Travis Chambers, District 10. At-large counsel, Lindsey McLemore, Clerk of Council, and city attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good evening and welcome to the April 22nd city council meeting. We appreciate having all of you here. We'll call the meeting to order and the first order of business is the same every week. That's asking God's presence on our proceedings. I'm going to call Pastor Wayne Anthony Sr. of St. Peter United Methodist Church and also, in a former life, a city councilman here in Columbus, Georgia. If you turn that light on, I'll get it turned on for you. There we go.
As we go into prayer, want all of us to remember Judy Thomas and her remarkable service to this community in so many different ways and to this council and the many that have gone before who followed her leadership and for whom she was an inspiration. Let us pray. Oh God, we come into this place, this council chamber, and we're asking for your counsel in each of one of our lives and every decision that we face. We pray, oh God, for your divine protection over our community, city, and state and nation. We pray for your divine intervention in our world and the troubles that it faces. And then I pray a special prayer for every person here and the unique role they have in making our city a better place, that you will protect them and the families from which they come, the organizations which they represent, and the lives that they serve in this community and beyond. Bless us, oh God, with your divine presence, power, perspective, and persistence. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Wayne, thank you so very much. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to flag.
I pledge allegiance to our flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second to receive, the minutes. Are there any discussions, any edits? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, good. You heard former councillor Wayne Anthony mention Judy Thomas. Just to let you know, unfortunately, I think everybody knows, unfortunately, she did pass away this last weekend. The arrangements will be, the visitation will be on the 6th of May from 5:00 to 8:00 at McMullen Funeral Home. And on the 8th, the service will be conducted at St. Luke at 11:00 a.m. So just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. All right, we do have some proclamations scheduled for this afternoon. First one is for the sons, daughters, and children of the American Revolution Day. It's councillor Chambers is going to present that. If I could get those individuals to come forward. I guess we're using this podium right in the middle? Okay, you can come to this front and center podium.
Good evening to you all. Thank you all for being here on today. It's an honor for me to be able to present this proclamation on behalf of our mayor and city council members and for sons, daughters, and children of American Revolution. The proclamation reads, whereas 250 years ago, on April 19th, 1975, the colonial militia engaged and defeated for the first time British regulars in pitched battles at Lexington and Concord, Massachusetts; and whereas April 19th, 2025, commemorates the 250-year anniversary of the official start of the American Revolution and America's fight for independence and liberty; and whereas the successful battles at Lexington and Concord, Massachusetts, led to an outpouring of colonial militia support for the American cause of independence and liberty; and whereas the successful battles at Lexington and Concord, Massachusetts, persuaded many colonial Americans of both sexes, all races, and religions, from all walks of life and all 13 colonies, Georgia included, to take up arms for and/or give aid and support to the cause of American independence and liberty; and whereas Coweta Falls Chapter of the SAR, George Walton and Oglethorpe Chapters of the DAR, and Lucy Spell Rayford Society of the CAR, descendants of the patriots who fought in the American Revolution, continue to honor and commemorate their ancestors' sacrifices and commitments to the cause of American independence and liberty. Now therefore, I, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 19th, 2025, as sons, daughters, and children of the American Revolution Day.
Would you like to make some remarks?
I'd just like to say thank you for making this proclamation for the city of Columbus and for our historical hereditary groups there. This was actually not really the first of the 250th anniversary items, and it also goes, it also goes through when Savannah was, when Savannah was actually liberated, which will be 2032, so it's, the 250th celebration goes for several years. So thank you for this start.
If you would, would you all introduce yourselves?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm Robert Moore, the chapter president of Coweta Falls.
I'm Danny Ginter, past president of Coweta Falls.
James Hall from Gladys Falls.
Charles Hall Jr., Sergeant of Arms, Coweta Falls Chapter, also honorary state president, State of Georgia, for the Lucy Spell Rayford Society, CAR.
And I'm Julie Hobbs. I'm the current regent for George Walton Chapter, DAR, and I'm also the senior society president for the Children of American Revolution of Lucy Spell Rayford Society.
I'm Alone Moore, and I'm honorary regent of George Walton. Excuse me.
I'm Marcia Newer, Regent of Oglethorpe Chapter.
I'm Sally Hall of Oglethorpe.
Well, thank all of you for being here. If you would, come around, we'll pass out these proclamations to you and thank you all for what you're doing. You know, I heard somebody asking a little while ago up here before the meeting, and I want to thank these individuals for showing up at a press conference that was held on the steps of the Citizen Service Center to sort of kick off the formation of a group that will be working towards a celebration of our nation's birthday next year. There'll be a lot of things going on over the next year. Alton Russell is the chair, so he will be, he'll be driving that, so be looking for some information coming as we near 2026. All right, next is World Championship Pizza Day. So this is a big deal. For those of you who didn't see this in the news, this is pretty cool. Jeffrey, you want to come on up to the front here? And Mayor Protem Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. While Jeffrey's coming, I did speak to him before the meeting and apologize for any of my southern slang, butchering any of the names that I'll be trying to pronounce here. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Jeremy Leo DiSarius is a native of Columbus, Georgia, of Italian descent, his family immigrating from Italy in 1920; and whereas Leo is a part of the first four-year graduating class of Northside High School, a graduate of certified pizzolo of two professional pizza schools in Italy, Scuola Italiana Pizziola and Associazione Vera Pizza Napoleitana. Whereas Leo is a former student of 14-time world champion pizzolo, Tony Giomani, proficient in all pizza styles, including New York, Neapolitan, Chicago, Detroit, Roman, Detroit, Sicilian, grandma, and other pan-style pizzas. Whereas the idea of Saron, the idea for Saron was established in Staten Island, New York, where he first started learning the art of pizza and launching their product before bringing it home to Columbus. And whereas the Saron's came, name came established from the family's last name at the time of the entry into USA via Ellis Island in 1920 with a simple goal of bringing the taste of home to New York, to the southeast, and making pizzas that can stand against any in the world. And here's, here's the good part. Not that that wasn't good, but anyway. Whereas on March 27th, 2025, for the first time in Columbus history, Leo was named World Pizza Champion at the International Pizza Expo in Las Vegas. Whereas we congratulate Leo on this recognition and thank him for putting Columbus, Georgia, on the world map for pizza. Now therefore, Mayor Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2025, as Jeffrey Leo DiSarius Day.
Jeffrey, you know, we get to celebrate a lot of state champions. We don't get many world champions.
That's right.
Congratulations, man. We're all so very proud of you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Make some comments?
First of all, just glorify God. I'm so glad he could use me and my talents just for his glory. That's the number one thing above all is to do that. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Allen. You did a great job ringing through. Those are some tough words, for sure. Again, thank you. I'm just honored and privileged to be a part of this community, to really put Columbus, it's a good name, good image on the map. This industry's worldwide. Pizzamakers all over the world have reached out via social media and definitely have their eyes on this city, wondering where the world champion come from, and I'm glad to bring some great attention to this great city. So thank you all so much.
Well, in all seriousness, we are extremely proud of you.
Thank you so much.
That's quite a chore. We congratulate you. Councillor Huff?
Yes, sir. Congratulations to you. Question, was that your father that was with you? You all flew to Italy looking for a particular oven to put in here?
No, sir. So actually, it was a gentleman by name Scott Cosentino. When we were looking for an oven, we met him in Staten Island. It was one of the guys I was training under. He worked with the Italians under Italian manufacturers, and there are several different family lines up to four or five generations old that still make these Italian ovens. He worked with us to provide the oven, and so all the inside of our oven is all Italian refractory brick engineered in Italy and assembled over here.
Yeah, I got a chance to meet a few people, and I remember when you were starting out and getting, you and I think Travolli's and a few others were getting started about the same time, up in the same area.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And you've done very well.
Yeah, thank you so much.
We appreciate you. Congratulations. Yeah, I've been there. Pizza's good.
Thank you, yeah. Very familiar face.
Yeah, we come and hang out in the corner sometimes.
Yeah, that's right. Yes, sir. I appreciate you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, sir.
Councillor Garrett?
I just wanted to congratulate you, Leo, and I mean, we, our family always enjoys your pizzas, but I also wanted to recognize him too. He, he's a man of multi-talents. We used to work out, I didn't work out with him at God's Barren, but he's one of the strongest men in Georgia. And I know he's won some competitions related to that, so he's a man of many talents. He, he does a lot of heavy lifting to work off all the pizza. But congratulations, Leo.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, Leo, congratulations again. Thank you for making Columbus look so good through you.
Absolutely.
So if you would, come up and let's shake your hand. Thank you.
And thank you all again for bestowing this honor upon me. I appreciate it.
Y'all introduce who's with you.
And again, this is my family with me. This is my older brother, Jonathan DeCesrus. This is my aunt, Carol Cantrell. And my mother, Sandra DeCesrus.
I'm supportive. We hope to see you all at the pizzeria soon.
Proud of you. Absolutely. Congratulations. All right. Next, we've got a proclamation celebrating Georgia Cities Week, and councillor Huff is going to present that.
Got everybody coming up? While they're coming, I'll say it's my honor to read this today. I'm always happy when others outside of right here in Columbus, Georgia, recognize you for all the good work that you do. And it's nice for us to be able to let the public know that you all are doing well enough for others around the state to see your good work. Whereas city government is the closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. Whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Georgia Cities Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives. And whereas this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all of the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people. And whereas the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. Whereas Georgia Cities Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 21st through April 26th, 2025, as Georgia Cities Week. Congratulations.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor, members of council, and thank you so much for that proclamation. Of course, every year when we come during this time, Georgia cities throughout are celebrating during this week. And what this is really all about is our opportunity from our departments to be able to share with the citizens really what they do. And so they all this week have a little something special just to be able to share with the community. And so if they will go ahead and put the presentation up, I'm going to ask each of them to come forward, introduce themselves, and tell you a little bit about what they have planned for the community this week. And we will go ahead and start with the Trade Center. They are, okay. So it looks like Kaylee is not here, was not able to make it evidently, but they're going to have a lunch and learn series on April 25th from 12:30 to 1:30. Bring your lunch and your friend and enjoy a shaded tour of the, of the area. And so that's what the Trade Center will be doing, and they do so much more, as you all know, and they probably have a whole lot more going on this week. So with that, I'm going to call on Zoe Hightower with Family Connection.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zoe Hightower, and I am the Director of Columbus Family Connection. We kicked off the week yesterday with a collaboration with the Community Reinvestment Department, where we had an info and go pop-up table here at the CSC, where we passed out information regarding housing. And we also have another pop-up table tomorrow in collaboration with the Communication and Community Affairs Department, where we pass now information regarding city government and community resources.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is South Scarborough, Fire and EMS Chief. The Fire and EMS Department is excited to be able to host not this Saturday, but next Saturday, an open house event. We're inviting members of the community to come to Fire Station 1 at 205 10th Street downtown to have an open house and visit with the firefighters, take a tour of the fire station, get to witness, have interactions with the fire trucks, have, bring your kids, let's get some photos with the kids on the fire trucks, talk to our firefighters and talk, get to see what they do on a daily basis. We're excited and appreciate Deputy City Manager for allowing us to be part of this opportunity. But again, it's not this Saturday, next Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00.
Good evening. I'm Holly Browder, Director of Columbus Parks and Recreation. Obviously, we do a lot of engagement with the community. We thought this was none other than this week to take a chance and do the same. So we've engaged students, youth, adults in the community with an online question and answer session, if you will. We have a quiz every day. We ask a question about the community, whether it be about the city or the Parks and Recreation Department. And at the end of the week, we'll give prizes. Our first day question was, can you tell us when the Columbus Parks and Recreation Department started? And then obviously, today, we gave the answer. We are the second oldest Parks and Recreation Department in the state of Georgia. We originated on August 1st of 1921. Today, our question is, can you name the last five mayors for the city of Columbus? So as you can see, it's a little bit of fun and a little bit of education for the community, but a huge thank you to Ms. Goodwin and others for allowing us to do this. And also, we were pretty privileged. On Monday, we got a shout-out from Georgia Municipal Association, GMA, for what our program is for the week. So thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I need to start off by saying Happy Earth Day. I'm Lisa Thomas-Cutts, the Executive Director for the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, and we're celebrating Earth Week all week long, as well as Georgia Cities Day. On this Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we'll be hosting a free paper shred and hazardous household waste and electronics event. And our partners will be, of course, Public Works and the Paper Weavers Shred at On-Site with Rivermill Data Management. We encourage everyone to come out, do their spring cleaning. And one note I need to make is for liquid waste, they will be disposed of at the Columbus Recycling Center on Piney Grove Way. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Everett Fleming. I'm the Assistant Director for Metro Transit System. This week, we are having participants come out and they can enter into a drawing to have a free trip. You can ride our Dollar Ride service or our Fix Route service. Just come to 814 Lynnwood Boulevard between the hours of 10:00 and 2:00 p.m. each day. We have daily drawings, so please come to 814 Lynnwood Boulevard. We'll be happy to serve you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Drell Short. I'm the Director of Public Works. And every year, we look forward to Georgia Cities Week because we normally have our Equipment Rodeo, which is an event in which our employees get to compete to go on to the National Equipment Rodeo, in which they are awarded various prizes. This year, because they've moved the rodeo, we had to move our rodeo. But instead, what we're doing is a touch of truck for all, for any elementary school that is asking us to come forward. But we also have three that we've already coordinated with that will be going. We'll be taking five different pieces of equipment to each school. We'll rotate them throughout, give the kids an opportunity to see a backhoe up front, see how it operates, let them touch it. They can get in the seat. They can operate it, Mayor, like we let you do it, but they can't do it. But that's just one thing that we're doing. And we're also doing a video that we would be using for the purpose of not only Georgia Cities Week, but in the future as well, to give information about various activities going on in the Department of Public Works, things that people need to know about what we require for different things like collections and things of that nature. So we look forward to that going out to the public, but we especially look forward to working with the kids and letting them touch our trucks. So thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kanee Swiggins, Interim Director at the Columbus Civic Center. And today, we kicked off Georgia Cities Week with an after-hours mixer. This mixer is going to take place until 7:00 p.m. tonight, so we've invited all of our partners and different groups to come out and enjoy the Columbus Civic Center Courtyard. We also have this Saturday at the Liberty Theater from 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m. We have a talent show. There's going to be a lot of youth that is going to be performing, so come out. It is a free event. There'll be food trucks and a lot of other activities going on.
Good evening. My name is Rob Scott. I'm the Director of Community Reinvestment. On April 24th, we will be hosting a bus tour for National Community Development, Development Week in conjunction with Georgia Cities to highlight significant CDBG-related and funded projects that we have had in our community. The first stop will be the Boys and Girls Club, and the final stop will be Rigdon Park, where we'll be looking at exercise equipment and some of the things that we've been providing for the community.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Valerie Richardson. I am the Director for the Job Training Division, Office of Workforce Development under Georgia, WorkSource, whoa, early, WorkSource, Georgia. I get it confused. But we will be participating in Georgia Cities Week on Friday, where we will be set up at the Civic Center out in front from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We will have our mobile unit on display, which is really just kind of almost like a school on wheels that will go through and the kids can get on, or adults, if they choose, to get on. And there are computers on there. There are stations where they can conduct business, they can do interviews, they can write their resumes, any of those things. We will also have some of our partners on display through Columbus Tech, and hopefully, Georgia Driving Academy will have their commercial driving truck on site, so that if there's anyone interested in participating and learning more about being certified as a commercial truck driver, we'll be able to have that as well. But that is something that we pretty much do every year. And in addition, this year, I think for the second year, we're going to be playing WorkSource Bingo. So if you want to come out and win some great prizes, come and answer some of the questions. and get your little pad, and we'll be happy to give you a great prize afterwards. Thank you, and good evening.
Where is it? Where is it, Valerie?
We're going to be set up at the Columbus Civic Center.
So as you can see, there are a lot of activities going on this weekend. Of course, next week, we invite you to come out and the public just to come out and be a part of all that we have going on. Any additional questions? Okay.
Lisa, thank you and the staff. I mean, I don't think people realize just how much is done on a daily basis in so many different areas by employees that you never get to see. This is an opportunity to talk to them about what they do and see the things that they do and they provide for the citizens. So proud of all of y'all. You did such a great job.
And this is just a handful, as you know, of our departments, just a handful of them. So, again, thank you.
Well, thank you. I'll pass. Lisa, if you want to come up, I'll give you this. We've got a few presentations on the mayor's agenda. The first one is another group that we're exceptionally proud of because of the hard work they do in Atlanta on our behalf. The Georgia General Assembly Post-L legislative Update brought to us by our delegation, our Madam Chair, Ms. Hughley. And we want to bring everybody up at the same time. That way, y'all can stand there very uncomfortable-like, so we can... Thank you for what you do. Y'all give them a hand for the great job they do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
There we go.
Is that it? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We are delighted to be here with you today, and because you all are so special, we brought the entire delegation this evening. But before we begin, we want to just say, on behalf of the delegation, we want to extend our condolences to the city and to members of council on the loss of former Council Judy Thomas. Columbus has lost a gracious lady who devoted so much of her life to the city of Columbus, and we want you to know that we share in that loss with you. So, but let me introduce my fabulous team. I'm honored to be the Chair of our delegation, and we have the best team in all of Columbus. And the reason that Columbus delegation remains respected throughout Georgia is because we work as a team, we don't always agree, but we never publicly are disagreeable. And when it comes to Columbus, we're all in, all working together for the benefit of Columbus. And that's why I'm so very pleased and very proud to be Chair of this delegation. We have with us tonight the Dean of the Senate, Senator Ed Harbison. We have the Majority Whip of the Senate, Senator Randy Robertson. We have one of the most experienced members of the House in Representative Vance Smith. And we have the gracious lady who represents Columbus and Talbot County and several other counties, Debbie Buckner. Now for our new kids on the block, who, one, think he's not a new kid anymore, but the sophomore in our group, Teddy Reese, represents House District 140. And I want you to know that Representative Reese has hit the ground running, and he's never stopped. And he's always everywhere, doing all that he can on behalf of the citizens that he represent. And our new shining star is Representative Carmen Rice, and she has hit the ground running as well. Everybody knows her. She's always standing up, asking questions, and jumping into the mix, and that's what we like to see. So we like... So tonight, we're going to hear from each of our members, and they have been given their relative assignments. We're going to start with the Dean of the Senate, Senator Harbison, and we will go in the order in which they were called. Senator Harbison.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Mayor, and honorable members of the council and staff. It is my great pleasure to be here with you tonight to give you a little sketch of what we've been trying to accomplish and/or what we did accomplish this year in the Georgia General Assembly, working as a team and working across lines and trying to do the things we need to do that not only benefit Georgia, but benefit Columbus and our various counties as well. As you know, I represent the district that represent 200,000 people, Macon, Maran, Tobler Schley, and Chattahoochee and Muskogee County. So I'm just honored to... 60 miles away is not always easy to reach out to, but I get a little gas stipend on that, so it helps out a little bit every now and then. Not enough, but it does. But just let me let you give you an idea. This year, I worked for veterans a lot, a lot of do a thing with a lot, being a veteran myself. This year, we learned of a Muskogee County citizen that had been just devastated by the loss of his wife, another son of his had committed suicide, and his son and the National Guard had been killed in a car accident. And the insurance company, which he had paid premiums with, did not refuse to pay his settlement. They just wouldn't do it. So I contacted the people and the Insurance Commissioner's Office, Commissioner King, and we worked across lines and made sure that we dealt with that. But it took forever to do it. They said, no, we won't go to do it. They paid their premiums legally. The premiums were accepted, they were covered. So we passed a legislation for the benefit of the veterans here that if you pay your premiums and you're not a victim or you're not injured as a result of war or in some maneuver exercise, that you are covered from now on. So I'd just like to give the General Assembly, the Governor, and everybody involved with that a great big round of applause for making sure our veterans are always covered in that regard. They're covered. In addition to that, this year, we raised the, well, prayerfully, it's going to be signed by the Governor, has not already, from $35,000 to $70,000 for the exemption of our veterans who are retired from the military. It would not only be that $35,000, it'd be $70,000. So we're certainly proud of that. We're just anxious to make sure we get that done, so... And in that vein, finally, we've made sure that veterans who have, need more than one grave site, they'll not only have one, but two grave sites, and we expanded that to our National Guard as well. So we're looking out for our veterans and their spouses, because when they come here, they're going to be appreciated because this is a peach state, but we look out for our soldiers who go far away places to keep us safe here at home. We love them, we appreciate them. Looking out for the regular citizen, there was a bill prayerfully on the Governor's desk at this time. That bill says that the minimum wage in Georgia will move from $5.25 to $7.25. That's the minimum wage in Georgia, not federal. Now, that's Georgia's minimum wage. So we want to make sure we're looking out for our veterans as well. So we thank you for what you do. You guys do a great job. I enjoy coordinating with the mayor and his staff as we try to solve the various problems experienced by people here in the Muskogee County and this surrounding area. God bless y'all. Thank you so much. We certainly appreciate you. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and citizens who are here tonight. It's always an honor to follow Senator Harbison. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find anybody that garners as much respect in the Capitol from both sides of the aisle than you will with Senator Harbison. He is a very balancing member of the Senate and of the delegation. And there are many times that I share Muskogee County with him, and I represent all of Harris County, all of Troup County, and all of Meriwether County. And there are many times when a contentious issue is going on, Senator Harbison and I'll lock eyes and know what direction we need to go in to take care of the community that we serve. But before I talk about the Senate priorities, I do want to briefly mention the loss of Judy Thomas. I came to know Judy in the mayor's office when Mayor Wetherington was in office, and I was asked to coordinate Homeland Security for the county, and Judy was his chief of staff. And our first meeting happened to be on her birthday when she qualified for Social Security. We had a very salty and hilarious conversation about that. If you know Judy Thomas, you know who won that conversation. But she was an incredible person, a great friend, and I went back and looked through photos of years of friendship together, and I can't think of anyone that represented the city of Columbus with as much grace and honor as Judy Thomas did. And not only did I lose a great friend, I think the city of Columbus has lost a great friend. And I think there will be those days when we have to make tough decisions that we ask ourselves, what would Judy do? And if we do what she would do, then we'll always be moving in the right direction. But I want to thank our delegation chair for giving me the opportunity to come up here. Of course, the Senate's number-one priority this year was a budget. And I'm glad everyone's sitting down, because when you vote on a $37 billion budget, sometimes it takes a little bit of the wind out of you. And we were able to cut some, but looking at the current economic pressures, looking at the current population growth in Georgia, we seem to be tracking in the right direction. We continue to cut income tax. We did it again this year, and we'll be sending at least $500 back to everybody this year. And so hopefully, what we will see in the future, once we address some of these tax credits and other things, is we'll continue moving in the direction to give the state of Georgia zero income tax, is what we're hoping, for state income tax, is what we're hoping. But there are four budgets. At State Capitol, a lot of people don't understand, when we get there, there's the Governor's Budget, and then there's the House Budget, then there's the Senate Budget, and those are usually three very different budgets. And we go into a room together, and after shedding tears, a little bit of blood, and some spirited debate, we come out with the fourth budget that ends up on Governor Kemp's desk, and he usually signs that budget once he makes his line item adjustments to the budget. And we're feeling pretty good about it, the way it came out. We worked very well with the House through these budget processes, and it has always worked out in the past. Our second priority was disaster relief for our farmers and for others down in South Georgia that were hit by the hurricane. We were able to find funding there due to cutbacks in federal funding. One of our primary concerns down in South Georgia, and in Augusta, was debris removal. And please understand, we're talking about thousands and thousands of trees, talking about thousands of telephone poles and everything else that cannot be left on the ground in order to prevent wildfires and for us to be sure that we don't suffer from something like pine beetles or other things. So a lot of these communities had to spend a lot of money, time, and effort to clean that up, and we reached into our reserve funds, and we pulled money out of there, and we sent it down to South Georgia and up to Augusta and those places, and hopefully, we're getting them back on track. Education was our second priority. We, there was a lot of debate back and forth over the promised scholarships. We were able to fully fund those. Those assist parents who want to choose a school, if their children are in the 25% of the bottom-performing schools in their district, it gives mom and dad the opportunity to find their children a better school choice, whether that be private school, whether it be homeschool, or some other model of such. It's been a very popular program. School safety was also a big part of our budget and a big part of our legislation this year, looking for new ways to make our schools safer. And understanding that, healthcare was a big part of it too, especially mental health care. And we understand that school safety, and I know Counselor Hicki understands this as well as anybody, it's sometimes our problem with schools are not metal detectors, they're not windows or fences, but it's the mental health of the men, women, and children that attend those schools. So we were able, through budgeting, to appropriate funds to continue running the psychiatry residence program at St. Francis Hospital that has been an example for the state to look at. And so we have continued to do that in the mental health side, hoping to continue to address the issues that we have in our society and community as a whole. Our other priority was the funding and corrections. For many, many years, the Georgia Department of Corrections has suffered from underfunding and lack of staff. And I think this year, in the Governor's Budget, he offered a small pay raise. The House and the Senate continue to work on that. But also, we provided enough funding to address a lot of the physical problems that they have on the campuses around the state, everything from locks and doors to windows to actually purchasing... I don't want to call them portable prisons because they are not portable once you put them down, but they're manufactured in the state of Texas. They'll be brought in here, they're completely steel-fortified, and because of the population that we currently have, which is approximately 50,000, is a very violent population. And so we have to have facilities that can withstand their anger while they're inside, because they tend to tear up a lot of things while they're there. And so we're hoping that will be taken care of and help with the investment we just made. And then finally, foster care was one of Lieutenant Governor Jones's priorities, and we addressed foster care by increasing foster care scholarships to families that take in foster care children to include their biological children, because they are also sacrificing and dedicating and giving part of their lives to help raise these children out of our foster care program. And we've also offered some tax credits to those foster care families that invest their lives, their time, and their family to taking care of these foster care. In the, just a couple of wrap-up things, and something that I know that the city attorney's office was concerned about, I was honored to work with Georgia Municipal Association, the ACCG, on Senate Bill 298. And what we did was establish a direct appeal on the denial of immunity. So when the city, should the city be sued, I know that's never happened before, but should it happen, and the city claims sovereign immunity or claims qualified immunity for one of its employees, the current process would be that if the judge denied it, for the city to appeal it, they would have to wait until the trial, at the end of the trial, and then file the appeal. With this legislation that's on Governor Kemp's desk, what will happen is if it's denied, the city can immediately appeal it, and the trial will be stayed until that appeal is heard. Therefore, it saves a lot of time on discovery, saves a lot of time on depositions and everything else, that we can address it on the front end. This was a priority of ACCG and GMA, and I was honored to work with them on this and get this through. But once again, I think we had a successful session, and everything worked out, and there's always certain things. We had one piece of legislation dealing with corrections that was somewhat controversial, Senate Bill 185, dealing with healthcare inside the prisons. And we also had Religious Freedom, which was also somewhat controversial, but both those bills are laying on the Governor's desk, awaiting his signature. So we feel comfortable as we move forward, and I do appreciate the trust that each of you have in us, and I hope that you know we have that same trust in you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Vance Smith. It's an honor to be part of this delegation. I live up in Harris County, but I do represent the northwestern portion of Muskogee County, and double churches, Brookstone, La Green Island area, and it is really an honor to work with these individuals right here. I also would like to pass along my condolences. Ms. Judy was, she was a pleasure to work with all the time, and she will certainly be missed. One thing I want to point out, and it happened last year, in 2024, we passed a CHIPS legislation, the Richard H. Smith CHIPS Act. CHIPS, as in your telephone, and cars, and appliances. Economic Development wanted to work with me over the summer. They thought maybe we got a little bit too much in the weeds. It was fine, so I worked with Economic Development, Department of DCA, the Community Affairs, the Governor's Office. We met, we crafted a CHIPS legislation that has passed the House and the Senate. It's on the Governor's desk. And to that point, we go through a 40-day session. When we end, the Governor has 40 days. He divides those bills up with all of his staff, and they look at all the legislation, whether he's going to veto it, sign it into law, or let it become law without signature. That's the way it can happen. So we're kind of in limbo right now until the... So we're kind of in limbo right now until the middle of May, around May 14th. And then we should get a final report of all the things that he has passed and has vetoed. But the CHIPS Act, I think, is very important. It's used more as a marketing tool to let the industry around the world know that Georgia is ready for the CHIPS industry to come here. Of course, we'd like to be a little bit greedy and say we'd love to see it to come to west-central Georgia. And I think we have adequate land, we have water, the power that we need. So let's stay tuned to that and see if we can't bring a great industry to Georgia that has a high-paying salary for workforce, and I think it will be great for our area of the state. Again, thank y'all for the opportunity to come. You can reach out to me anytime. A lot of you have my cell phone number. Please shoot me a text, willing to work with you. And again, always a pleasure working with the people behind me. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Buckner, and I represent the parts of the counties that they mentioned that they didn't have all of. I represent South Columbus, East Columbus, all of Talbot County, part of Meriwether, and part of Troup. I've been asked to tell you about some of the things in the budget that are coming our way down here in Columbus. And this is a copy of that fourth budget that Representative Robertson mentioned. And the tabs are for all the things that we got in our region of the state. So I was real excited to be able, this gotten crunk because I've had to do this presentation a few times. But we had a good budget year. And I'll just kind of quickly go through these. I'm sorry, but it'll be faster if I read them. But we got 1.6 million funds to operationalize a new 30-bed project, New Hope Forensic Step Down Unit at West Central Georgia Regional Hospital. We got $12,200,000 for one-time funding to design, construct, and equip and associated demolition that will be required for the space science and robotics facility on the main campus of Columbus State. 6.8 million in funds, one-time funding to design and construct a new facility for the Columbus Day Reporting Center and Field Office here in Columbus. 3.5 funds, one-time funding for additional construction for 56-bed facility at the juvenile justice unit here in Columbus. 3 million for funding for the Vector Program, which is the Colonel Ralph Puckett Veterans Education Center Transition Resource Workforce Development Center at Columbus Tech. I haven't got that memorized yet, but it's a great thing, and I'm glad we got the funding. One of the things that we also got funding for that I will always remember, both Clifton Fay and Judy Thomas helping me out. Clifton and I serve on the Twin Cedars Board, and we were facing a real financial crisis. And one of the years, I came to both of them ahead of when we have hometown, our hometown meeting and bring forth the issues and the concerns that we have. And they needed an increase in the per diem because there had not been one for 13 years. Judy brought it to the city council, you all voted on it, and we got an increase that year. We haven't had one since then until this year. So it seemed very fitting and proper, and I think she would have been very proud that they got a little bit of an increase this year, as did Medicaid providers, which will be good for our medical people here in Columbus. I will leave with that and accept to say thank you for recognizing the 250th birthday of America and recognizing the SAR and DAR. I'm a member of the George Walton DAR group that was here, and we tried to get the state to do the same, and they didn't quite get it across the finish line. So I'm proud y'all can do better work than the General Assembly. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro temp, members of council, Dr. Hughley, I am glad to be home. Who are glad to be back home. Those three months up there, it's some great work, some hard work. But thanks to amazing team that we have, we're able to get it done. I too, on behalf of my family, want to send our condolences to council and the city for the loss of Councilor Judy Thomas. I remember my last interaction with her was at the Family Connection, not Family Connection, Hometown Connection meeting that we had, and she rolled in. She wasn't late, but I said to her, now that you're here, we finally can start. What took you so long? She said, I don't have my turbo motor on this chair yet. And she looked at her brother who was pushing her, and it was a nice laugh. We had a good time. You know, Judy and I certainly had readily evident cultural differences. But one thing that we did is we respected each other. Even when we disagreed, we were able to move forward and do what's best for the people. And I will always remember her leadership from that perspective. Mr. Mayor, I also want to take a point of personal privilege to just say a few extra words about the chair of our delegation. Not only is she the chair of our delegation, but she's also the minority leader of the entire House of Representatives. And 80 members she's in charge of in that house, making sure that we move collectively, making sure that we get things done, the priorities within the Democratic Party. So if you don't mind, I would like for the people here to join me in a round of applause to our minority leader, Representative Carolyn Hughley. Now, there were a few bills that you guys wanted us to work on. Some things we were successful with, some we're still working on. There was two bills in particular that we do have House bill numbers for. That's House Bill 609 and House Bill 610. Those are the bills dealing with the conflict of interest as it relates to the TAB process. And that was something that you all asked for in resolution. I spoke with the gentleman over that committee. We will require some summer conversations. So I'm going to be in contact with the legal office and probably you, Mr. Mayor, and Dr. Hughley to see exactly what the conflicts are that we're looking for. I know there was two resolutions in there that you guys wanted us to take a look at. So we do have active bills. We just got to make sure we can hone down and drill in on exactly what we're trying to accomplish with that. Another resolution in there, I think this came from Counselor Barnes, and I think Counselor Toya Tucker worked on this as well, was the legitimation process of fathers. And we did author a House resolution on that, and I'm honored to say that on the last day of legislation, signed and die, the speaker did pick that up as an official study committee. So this summer, I will be working on that study committee. They'll roll out the other members later on. But we're going to look at the legitimation process because here in Georgia, we do believe that fathers should be in the lives of their children. And it shouldn't be too legally complex, and it certainly shouldn't cost too much for a guy to say, I want to be a father and do my responsibility as a father. So I appreciate the nod on that from this council to work on that issue. And I'm glad that the speaker saw that as an important enough issue for this state to pick up. And we will certainly keep you involved on that process. Representative Vance Smith and I are working with some representatives in South Georgia to expand funding for 211. We learned through Hurricane Helene how important 211 is to our emergency response system. So people, we want during emergencies to call 911 if there's a medical emergency. But if you need to know where to go get water because your water's not on, or you need to know where you can go get a hot meal, or where there may be shelters, that's where 211 is becoming so important. And FEMA and FEMA, during this last tragedy that we had in South Georgia, both tweeted out the usage of 211. And right now, in the state of Georgia, we are 78% complete with having that coverage throughout the entire state. So we are about $2 million short on having the entire state covered, and we are working on that as well. And what's going to be important about it from a Columbus perspective is that we have an established 211 call center right now at our United Way office. And it will be that office that will be expanded to handle the rest of the calls for the state of Georgia. So we are talking about some additional jobs here in Columbus, Georgia for our people. There are two bills that I worked on personally that made it through committee and made it through rules. We're hoping that they will be called for a vote at next legislative session starting January 26th. It's the deed bill. I work with Representative Vance Smith. I meant, not Representative Vance Smith, I want to call you for everything, right? But we did consult about it, but Representative Gerald Green, just south of us, we're seeing an influx in deed theft amongst our senior citizens, amongst our servicemen and women in military who has purchased property and paid for it, and they're not in the area. And it's just as simple as someone going down to the clerk's office and filing a deed and taking your name off of it. Well, guess what, you guys? If a tow company here towed your vehicle, before they can take it to auction to cover their expenses, they have to send out two certified letters. But someone can go down to the deeds office and file a deed on your property, and they get absolutely no notice from the clerk's office. And that's state law, it's nobody's fault. It's state law, and it's our job to fix it. And we're working on fixing it. We got it through the judiciary committee, we got it through rules. We just got to make sure it get voted on. I am happy to report, as I get ready to conclude, that the speaker changed one of my committee assignments. As you know, I'm on the Economic Development and Tourism Committee, as well as the Public Health Committee. But he also added me to the Agriculture Committee. And I'm excited to be working on that. Agriculture is a $94 billion industry in the state of Georgia. And you probably think, well, we don't have farms here in Columbus. Well, that stuff that you go buy at Publix don't appear from nowhere. So we got to make sure we're taking care of our farmers because they're feeding Georgia, and they're feeding America. So thank you again for the honor of the service, a privilege to serve the people of Columbus, Georgia. And thank you guys for working with us, Mr. Mayor, the techs, Mr. City Manager Clifton Fay, who's not here, but you as well, Ms. Lucy, and Dr. Hughley. When you guys reach out to us, when we can text you and get back to us real quick, that helps us do our job. So part of our success is because you're doing a great job in your seat. So thank you so much for working with us, and we look forward to the continued partnership.
Good evening, council. I'm honored to be here and to see you, and I appreciate what each of you do. And having just completed my first legislative session, I'm amazed at how fast 40 days went by. It's very fast-paced. But I came to truly appreciate how much of the real work happens when we're here at home, the off-season, the community conversations, the support that you bring when you discuss with us the things that are important to the community and the study committees. That foundation is always key in navigating a session effectively for us all. So, and I'm very incredibly grateful for the chance to serve and proud we delivered meaningful legislation on three of the core focus issues for the House that the speaker spoke of from the beginning. That was school safety, addressing our literacy issue, and tort reform. And as Vance mentioned, I'm thrilled that our CHIPS bill has officially passed both the House and Senate, and he's already talked on that. It's been a meaningful effort championed by him and Richard, and seeing it come to life was a powerful moment for all of us. Pressing that green yes button was more than just a vote. It was a tribute to Richard's vision, a significant step investing in our local economy and workforce development. So I look forward to us continuing to work on that initiative. And my first bill I presented this session was House Rule 52. What that dealt with was ensuring that the widows of disabled veterans would continue to get homestead exemption. Often, life-changing events, moves from one county to another within our state occur. And this is just to provide clarity and predictability for the widows of our disabled veterans. So it passed the three House committees and passed on the House floor, went through four presentations and Senate committees. And now, Senator Robertson is carrying the bill in the Senate, and we look forward to its final passage in the upcoming session. And, you know, ensuring, working for our military families and community and state this upcoming session. So lastly tonight, I was asked to share, and I'm excited to share, the exciting news about what we're bringing home to support the continued growth of Columbus Technical College. The 2025 budget, what now passed and signed, includes $3 million for the Vector Project at Columbus Tech. This investment is a meaningful step forward, helping us support our veterans by providing the education and training they need to smoothly transition into careers right here in our community. It's a win for our region, and we're very proud to be part of it. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to report to you. Don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I'm the newest one. I serve on four committees. I'm Vice Chair on Education, I serve on the Transportation, I'm Secretary on Resource Management, and I'm on Juvenile Judiciary. So thank you, I appreciate it, and thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor and council, you can see we have an outstanding team representing us in the Georgia General Assembly. And as I close tonight, on behalf of this delegation and the 60,000 constituents that I represent, I want to acknowledge the fact that this is the last year that our city manager is going to hear this report from us. And so as he retires at the end of this year, I want to thank him for his commitment and outstanding service to our citizens over the last 40-plus years. Mr. City Manager, you have built an outstanding team, many of which we saw tonight. And I'm very proud that Columbus is the 12th-best-run city in the country. And you have received so many awards that there's not space to hang them, so I don't know about you bringing them home. But there's one that I'm particularly proud of, and that is the fact that you received in 2015 the Pillars of Professional Management Award from the Georgia City and County Managers Association. And in 2021, the Georgia Municipal Association inducted you into the Hall of Fame. So thank you for your service to our city, and in your retirement, we wish you continued health and happiness. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Representative Hughley, and to all of our delegation, I can't tell you how proud we are of the way that you do your business. Y'all work so hard for Columbus. Over the years, you've always used the same model. You caucus, and that doesn't mean there's not a little blood on the floor every now and again. But when you guys come out, you speak with one voice. And that is what has enabled Columbus, Georgia, and this surrounding area to thrive. So on behalf of all of the citizens, the over 200,000-plus citizens in Columbus, thank you, thank you, thank you for what all of you do. Appreciate it. Busy, busy year at the Capitol, as you can tell. We got a couple of presentations. First of all, I want to bring Siobhan Thomas, a Solicitor General of Muskogee County, Georgia, forward. Mr. Solicitor, welcome. We wanted to use this as an opportunity, I think, to let you address the public.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You had attorney Tater Reese, then you have me, and then you have the judge coming up, three attorneys in a row? I think that's a setup. Anyway, my name is Siobhan Sutcliffe-Thomas. I am the Solicitor General. I brought along with me the people that keep me straight. First, my Senior Chief, introduce yourself.
Al Tovias Fillmore.
And my Director of Operations, Ms. Rhonda Dial.
My name is Rhonda Dial, D-I-A-L, like the soul.
I just wanted proof, y'all saw when she hit me, right? I said, you keep me straight, y'all saw that. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, the other presenters that just left, I think I'll start where they left off. I think somebody said budget. So I think that would be a good place for me to start. But before I get there, I remember a week before I was soaring in, the city manager had what he called a transition meeting. And I listened to everybody, had all the department heads. And I distinctly remember the city manager saying, whatever he needs, if it's within reason, make sure he has it so his transition will be smooth. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take time to thank you personally. You have visited my office, I've made all my complaints known. You have written them down, and you've said you've kept notes. Mr. City Manager, I would like to extend the same thank you to you. You've done the same. I've called you several times, have always reached out to the different departments. I just want to thank you for your leadership. I just wanted to thank you for your leadership. Where Miss Crab, Miss Crab left? Yeah, well, I talked to her when she gets back. So all the City Councilors, you've visited my office on my invitation. City Councilor Huff, my attorney friend. I think you understand more than probably anyone the operation that I'm running and what I need. So I've been knocking on your door. You've visited with me, Ms. Cogle. And I want to make special mention of City Councilor Tucker. She visited with me. I told her some areas where I was in need. I walked her downstairs, and by the time I got back to my office, the sheriff called me to offer me what I said I needed. So I just wanted to thank you for that. She also visited with us last Friday. We had a court docket of 139 people that was on the docket, not counting the probation violation folks. And Counsel Toya was, you know, appreciated you visiting with me to see what we do. I've also visited with Counsel Hickey. Thank you for that, and Counsel Chambers. A lot of folks do not know, I asked the question, what does the Solicitor do? Oh, I forgot. Counsel Aker, we're gonna catch up on the phone calls one of these days because I think we call every other day, and we just keep missing each other. I thank you for taking my calls. We are the office that prosecute all misdemeanors offenses that is bound over from the municipal court or from the Recorder's Court. I see Judge Riney and Judge Dunlap here. I think they'll talk a little bit more about that. We also represent the state on any of those cases that are disposed of but are subsequently in the process of appeal. We do warrant application for those who miss court. We do probation violation. Am I missing anything? We do a lot, and I think you heard me say that before. We do a lot. As a matter of fact, they have been doing a lot before I got there, and they were doing a lot with a little. So I take my hats off to the staff of the Solicitor General's Office. I'm not gonna stay long. I'm just giving the Council a heads-up that I will be back with my list, off my wants. Thank you so very much for having me.
Excuse me, we do have an update from the Recorder's Court. Chief Judge David Riney, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of Council, City Manager, is there a remote? Is this it? Here it is. First of all, I just hope that my annual update to you all, I like to provide an update every year just to kind of give you an idea of what Recorder's Court is doing and how they're doing so you all have an idea of what's going on. But first of all, I do hope that this report honors Judy Thomas, Pops Barnes, because they were such tremendous supporters of Recorder's Court and me, and always encouraging us. So I hope this report does them honor as well. First of all, we have just a great team, and I want to introduce Judge Jennifer Dunlap, who came, and on behalf of Judge Whitaker and Judge Henderson and Chief Clerk Claudetta Williams and our entire staff, I think you should be very proud of the people that we have working for you. Quite honestly, it's not what I do, it's what they do. And you'll see what they process through here, but they are devoted and committed to serving your constituents, our community, and they do it day in and day out. And our motto is kind of, treat people the way you'd want to be treated. And I can tell you that it's not always easy. We deal with a lot of people that are upset when they gotta put money out of their pocket and pay fines. It's not always easy, but they do a great job, and I am tremendously proud of them, and I think you all should be as well. Just a quick, anytime I get an opportunity to tell people what we do, I like to do that. I know some of you know this already, but many people don't. But we basically take every case from all these agencies, every case made by the Columbus Police Department, Georgia State Patrol, Department of Transportation, Muskogee County School District, Columbus State University, Fire Arson Unit, Inspections and Code, Animal Control. All those cases, Recorder's Court is kind of a foundational court in which all those cases made come through Recorder's Court. We hear only criminal cases, whether it be traffic citations, city ordinance violations, or everything from murders all the way down to littering. We kind of hear it all and see it all. Just to give you an idea, I always think of it as kind of a funnel. Everything comes into Recorder's Court, and my goal is to dispose of it, as much of it as we possibly can at that level. And then what cannot be disposed of goes to either misdemeanors state court and Solicitor General Thomas, or to the DA's office and District Attorney Don Kelly. As I said, we hear traffic citations, criminal cases only, city ordinance violations. It could be anything from DUIs, reckless driving, to city ordinance violations for loitering or disorderly while intoxicated. I know many of you know this, but it's a wide range of things that we hear and see, as well as certain state misdemeanors that we dispose of at our level. We don't do jury trials, but we do bench trials for any of these offenses up there and handle all of them in our court. And I'll go over through some numbers, which is kind of amazing to see. We also handle initial appearance hearings, which is anybody that is booked into the jail has to go before a judge, in which they're advised of their constitutional rights, as well as the charges against them and any bail or bond is set, if can be at that point. We have preliminary hearings on every case of every person that's booked into the jail. If they don't post bond, they have to go before a judge within generally 48 hours to 72 hours to determine if there's probable cause to continue to hold them. So we have all those cases that come through us if probable cause is found, or we set bond or bail on those cases as well. We also issue arrest warrants. There's thousands of arrest warrants. Officers come with us with arrest warrants. We do thousands, I don't even know the exact number, search warrants. We do hundreds of search warrants, orders for production of documents, such as in financial fraud crimes and things like that, where they have to get documents, and in banks need an order from a court. We do all of that. And importantly, we collect millions of dollars in fines and bonds. Every bond that's posted and all the fines that come in, and I'll talk a little bit more in detail, but that is a major operation in and of itself. If you think about over $4 million in fines and millions in bonds come through that court, and they have to be managed, and it's not just like they are dumped into the city coffers. They have to be divided up because the state legislature has certain surcharges where these fines have to be divided out to, whether it be the Ingenit Defense Fund or the Victim Advocates, I mean, the Victims Assistance Fund, numerous different funds that all those monies go to. So it's a major operation in that respect. Just some numbers, and I'm not going to go into any of the tremendous details, but just to give you an opportunity to look at the numbers. And probably just what you can see from that is every category of cases has increased. I took over in January 1st of 2023. The cases have gone up. In large part, that is because now you're seeing where, when we were starting, we were probably close to 200 officers short. Now that we are coming back on to getting fully staffed, those officers are making cases, making traffic cases, solving older crimes, those types of things. So every category of cases gone up, and I will tell you that already, we had 29,000 in 2024. We're already, we'll be at close to 12,000 by the end of April for the first four months. So you can imagine, our 23 staff members, the 23 team members that we have, handle all these cases processed in one way or another. The revenue, like I said, my goal is not to generate revenue. That's not what we are about. But it is a byproduct of obviously the number of cases. Over $4 million, $4.3 million in revenues generated through the fines. My goal, and I tell our judges, is we are not about generating revenue. My goal is to treat people fairly, with dignity and respect, but to hold people accountable. And individually, you may not want to be held accountable, but I think people value the consistency and fairness across the board, as long as we apply things equally. And that's kind of what I believe. As you can see, the numbers have increased every year. I anticipate again this year with the fines going up. That's just a quick summary of the fines to give you a total case count kind of number. Those numbers do not include violations of probations, which we hear a number of. We don't count those as a separate statistic. They're part of that 29,000, which we probably hear at least two every week, if not more. So that is also part of it. Those numbers also do not take into account a new duty that we have, which is the school camera cases from Muskogee County School District. We are taking on those. Approximately 10 of those are up and running or about that now. And we'll, I'll go into a little bit more detail on that, but those numbers don't include any of that. One of the goals that I, when I started there was, we had long court sessions. If you were there for a stop sign violation, you could be there for three or four hours. And my goal was to eliminate that. I did not want people sitting in court for more than an hour, two hours max, occasionally that we don't have a whole lot of control over some of that. But my goal is that, to keep people and officers out of court. Keep the officers out on the street, keep people out of the court, get them to come in and get their business done as best as possible. So we've divided up court, and y'all are gracious enough to give us the annex. I know all of y'all probably have been over there and looked at it. So over there, we do our Patrol Traffic Court, Mondays through Thursday. We have three sessions every day, 8:00, 10:00, and 2:00, and that's just all traffic citations. And that is a look at our new annex, which we are very proud and grateful for, and thank you all for giving us that courtroom as an X, take some of the burden off the two courtrooms that we had before, which we could be, sometimes have, we've actually had over 500 cases scheduled for one courtroom at a time, which is just impossible to manage. So being able to spread these out over the courts keeps our officers on the street, keeps citizens out of the court for longer periods. In our courtroom one in the main building, we do all the preliminary hearings. These are all the jail cases. Everybody that's booked into the jail comes through ours, at least through those agencies that I talked about. And we do those Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM and 1:30 PM, all the probable cause hearing and bail hearings. And we'd also have court every Saturday. In holidays at 8:00 AM, we do initial appearance hearings and set bonds on those days as well. A lot of people don't know a lot about Recorder's Court because it is kind of an anomaly. There's only three of them in the state of Georgia, so a lot of people don't really understand what we do. So this kind of gives you a better idea. And to spread courts out again, we separated in courtroom two. We've kind of divided things up to, again, spread these cases out. Georgia State Patrol, we were getting every quarter, 300 to 500 cases on one or two days. So now we've given them every Monday at 9:00. Tuesdays are generally our motor squad days at 8:45 and 1:45. The first and third Wednesdays are what we call Environmental Court or Code Enforcement Courts. And then the second and fourth Wednesdays at 9:00 is going to be, is our Muskogee County School District, school camera speed enforcement cases. Thursdays, we have our principal summons cases. Those are all misdemeanor or city ordinance violations that are not booked into the jail but given principal summons. And then our motor squad cases. And Fridays, we keep the courtroom reserved for Superior Court, so they can come to court there. Again, we do the, we're starting the Muskogee County School District School Zone Speed Camera Cases. We don't do Brookstone or St. Luke. We get a lot of calls for those. That is managed through the Sheriff's Office and Municipal Court. But eventually, we will have 55, I believe it is, schools or school zones. And that's going to be a lot of tickets, whether you agree with it or not. It is going to generate a lot of volume, and that is something else that we are handling as well in our court. I've kept open some additional times if we need it, depending on how many cases we start getting. So that's that. Some of the challenges we face, very briefly, mental health is always a challenge with our jail. As you know, the jail is, it's, a lot of people are brought into the jail that have mental health issues. We've been working with Probate Court to do assisted outpatient therapy. We've also worked and set up a system with New Horizons to divert those individuals who are not a severe risk to the community that can be released to family members, who can immediately report to New Horizons and get the immediate help that they may need, back on their medications or whatever it may be. But mental health is always a challenge for the jail part of it. Obviously, our facilities are always an issue. It's an old building, as you all know. I know many of you toured the jail. When it rains, sometimes it pours in Recorder's Court inside, literally, which is always an issue, and we've requested some fixes, excuse me, fixes through the budget this year. Personnel retention, we have great, great people. Truly, we do. Keeping good people is always hard in city government. You all know this already. But we do have good, great people, and I'm very proud of who we have. And I would just end by saying that continuous improvement, we're never there. Our goal is always to keep improving and make it better, more efficient. I'm always open to hear anybody that has any ideas. Sometimes it works. Court system by its very nature is, tends to be inefficient and burdensome, but my goal is to make it as efficient as we possibly can. And again, I just want to thank you all for your support, your encouragement. And if you have any questions, I am happy to answer anything. Or if you'd like to do it offline and meet with me, I'm happy to meet with any counselors at any time.
Thank you, Judge. We do have some questions. Counsel Tucker?
Yes, thanks, Judge, for providing this update. You made a comment in reference to GSP, and you said quarterly. So it seems like you have a lot more than quarterly need. What I would hope that we can see, and I know it's not just GSP, but the school cameras, but the data to show the increase that, of work, based on how many tickets we're getting for school cameras, GSP, because we see them out a lot more now. We do have a lot more officers patrolling and just kind of seeing it. I saw it, Municipal Clerk Reginald Thompson showed me some figures, but looking at the numbers of how many cases that you're getting will also be helpful.
Okay. Certainly, I would like to provide that. And we were doing it every quarter because Georgia State Patrol has to cover a large area. Obviously, their officers cover a region, so they not only have to be in Columbus Recorder's Court, Municipal Court, Harris County Probate Court, Talbot County, all these different counties. So they're kind of dispersed, and they were only doing it once a quarter. I met with them, got them to do it, so now they're scheduling them every Monday. So we spread those out, which tends to help. The issue that we do have with Georgia State Patrol that we're working on fixing right now is that their systems don't talk to our systems electronically, getting those. Those tickets are all manually entered, but we do have a fix in the work that we're working with Georgia Council of Courts to get those electronically downloaded so that we can use them electronically and not type in all those things. So Georgia State Patrol is a big part of our caseload.
Yes. And I will say, I know that Solicitor came up and spoke, and I learned some interesting facts in reference to how many judges we have. And I think in state court, and these numbers are from 1987 to 2025. So, and he left so quick, but Superior Court, back in 87, had four full-time, and now they have seven full-time. Juvenile had one part-time, now they have two full-time and one part-time. State Court, two full-time, and that's it. That was in 87, and here we are in 2025, and they still have, you know, two full-time judges. And then Municipal, of course, they have one full-time and one, four part-times, and they had one full-time. And Recorder's Court, I'm so thankful that we added the extra help that you need. And you all started in 87 with two, two part-time, actually. And now you have three full-time and three part-time. But it just shows how we're growing as a city, as a county. And I do agree, we do have to look at this because we're talking about moving cases. Cases aren't slowing down, and that's the reason why I asked the question regarding. It'd be good to see the volume that you have now because we're putting more school camera zones up probably like almost every month, it seemed like.
We are.
So you got a lot of work, and the Solicitor has a lot of work. And we definitely gonna have to look at it because if we put in the funds on the law enforcement side, we gotta put it on the. side, we got to put it on the judicial side. So, but thank you for what you do.
Well, thank you, Counselor. And I do think we have to look at it as, you know, in the past, we treated it as a part-time courts. And, you know, it's, it's, it's really something that we have to look at. And if we're going to deal with these things and move these cases properly, they, they do have to be supported properly. And you all have been tremendous in your support. Without the additional judges, we absolutely cannot handle the cases the way we have. And I think that was part of the problem that we had before is, before I took over, and Judge Hunter was doing a yeoman's job. I can't, I don't, still don't understand how he did as much as he did by himself, primarily as the only full-time judge. But he did a yeoman's job. And, but it's just, there's no way to operate a court with one full-time judge. So we've been very blessed, and I'm grateful for having the three full-time judges, as well as the pro temp judges that can fill in as well. And Judge Dunlap does a great job, and our other judges do a great job as well.
Yeah. And I appreciate how you all are separating the courts, especially for those school zone camera citations.
Yeah. I don't like people sitting in court for long periods of time. And just for our citizens and our police officers, it doesn't do anybody any good. So my goal would be an hour, hour and a half max, that you could be in and out of there is, is what I would like. Doesn't always work out that way, but that's what I would like.
Yeah. So thank you, and thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, I just wanted to have, thank Judge Renary for what he's done since we were able to reorganize. They basically brought Recorder's Court into the, into the next century and streamlined it. And we've got some very effective, very effective judges there. I wanted to remind counsel that the Recorder's Court Committee was made up of Counselor Thomas, Counselor Barnes, and myself. And with the loss of those two great minds and, and hard worker, hardworking, dedicated folks, we need to have two more. And I, I would like counsel to consider, we have to make a decision tonight, but I would like counsel to consider Counselor Huff and Counselor Chambers. Counselor Huff, with his background and knowledge of counsel over the years, and, and Counselor Chambers, from his HR perspective, I think he would benefit the committee very well. And also to remind everybody, the organizational structure that we've put together over there with Recorder's Court, and Judge Renary, and Judge Henderson, and Judge Whitaker, running it, it, it really doesn't require any effort on our part. You come and give us updates periodically, and that's, that's all we need, really. Just keep us out of your way so you can do your job, basically. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that while you were here, Judge. And go ahead and ask counsel to be thinking about those committee as we move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm grateful for you and for Judy Thomas and Pops Barnes, because your vision and eventually counsel's vision is what led us to where we're at today, to where we can address these cases. And I'm grateful for all of that. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I just thank you for all that you do, and thank your entire team, because it's, they do a great job.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
All right. Assistant City Attorney, it's your agenda. I'm going to hit you light.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counselors. Mr. City Manager, we'll try to get right on through our business agenda. First, we have three rezonings that are up for vote on second reading. The first one is at 3051 Rees Road, going from single-family residential two to single-family residential four.
All right. There's a motion and a second to approve the Rees Road rezoning. Is there any questions or comments to that item? If not, please put it on the screen. And counselors, you can enter your votes. All right. That's unanimous.
Our next rezoning is 11,001 River Road, going from residential estate 10 to residential estate one.
Motion, second to approve the River Road rezoning. Discussion on that one? Hearing none, please put it on the screen. Counselors, you can enter your vote.
Next, we have 1,046 33rd Street, going from residential multifamily two to residential multifamily one with conditions.
Motion and a second to move the rezoning on 33rd Street. Any discussion? All right. Please put it on the screen. Counselors, enter your votes.
Next, we have back and ready for a vote, the ordinance adopting amendments to Chapter Five of the Columbus Code pertaining to animal services.
Motion and a second to approve item four. Any discussion on that item? All right. Please put it on the screen. Counselors can vote. And that's approved.
And also, ready for a vote is the ordinance amending section 17B-11 of the Columbus Code pertaining to demonstration and festival permits.
Motion and a second to approve the adjustment to the demonstration of festival permits. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, all, if you would, please put it on the screen. Counselors, you can punch in your vote. That's approved.
And next, we have on, back on first reading, a rezoning at 3212 Sixth Avenue. Is Ms. Lopez Thank you. First of all, are there any questions from counselors?
I do not see any.
All right. You may make a presentation, or we can simply see if there's any discussion from the audience, and then you, you wouldn't have to make a presentation. Is there anybody in the audience here to be heard on 3212 Sixth Avenue, for or against? Appears to be no one. This can be voted on at, by consent at our work session on the 29th of May. April, sorry. Thank you. Yes. So we'll, we'll let you know how that comes out. Thank you. And our last rezoning on first reading is 4246 and 4243rd Avenue, going from light manufacturing industrial to residential multifamily one. Pearlie Hood applicant and owner. Any questions of counsel?
Doesn't appear to be any.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard on this rezoning? Sir, there being no comment, we can take a vote at the next meeting on the 29th of April.
All right. I don't have to be here for that, correct?
No, that's correct.
All right. Thank you all very much.
All right. And last, we have a resolution, amending a resolution done earlier this year, 03225, which imposed certain insurance requirements for CCG vendors. This amendment clarifies that certain providers of professional services are exempt from the scope of the resolution. These are just a few cleanups, problems that had been realized as we have tried to enforce the resolution.
All right. Well, we've got a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on that resolution? All right. Please put it on the screen. And counselors, you can enter your That's approved.
Thank you. That concludes our business agenda.
All right. We'll move to the public agenda. And keep in mind on the public agenda, you'll have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Counselor Anker?
Thank you, sir. It's just a matter of question. I'm still asking questions. I, I want to make sure I'm affirming my understanding. And, and Madam City Attorney, I wanted to ask, when it comes to a resolution, who has the authority to approve a resolution? I just wanted to be affirmed in that myself.
The councils.
The councils.
Six votes of council.
Just the councils. And who, can, can anyone amend, amend an authority on their own free will? Or is it, who has the authority to amend?
That would have to be the same council action.
So it's only the council that has that authority. I just wanted to have that in my head, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All right. As I was saying, the, the public agenda, you'll have five minutes. There is a light that you, will kind of warn you at the, at the podium. And if you can't finish everything you wanted to say in five minutes, we'll allow you to come back at the end of the meeting for three more minutes. And I will, I promise I'm not being rude. But when you hit five, just to be fair, I'll cut everybody off. All right. So first, we've got Mr. Ronald Carther regarding closing of Morris Road. If you would, when you get to the mic, just state your name and, and your address. If you turn that light on, sir, so that I can get your mic turned down. I can't, we can't hear you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
There you are. I apologize. Yes, sir.
So I got five minutes.
Five minutes.
All right. Well, I came up because I got a property on Morris Road. I also have a business on Morris Road. And the closing of the Spider Wheel, I don't know whether you guys been out there now. It's just a total mess out there. And me, as a business owner, I've lost 95% of my business. And Mr. McClan always told me, if I had a problem, to come to city council. That's why I came up, to just let you guys know. If you would come out and see what's going on. People are speeding up and down the street, turning around in my driveway. And I'm a business owner. And the city has not came out and done anything in, in regards to that. So I would like for you to look at what's going on in that, in, on Morris Road, and give me some kind of feedback on it. And maybe look at, maybe look at something that you might be able to do to change the situation, because it's just a mess.
Okay. Well, we can, we can get somebody out there along with the engineer. But I think at this point, we'll just have to figure some way to try to continue to give you access. My understanding was that all the businesses would still be accessible. I know it might be different for a while. It's just no, no way around it. But
Can I ask you this, Mr. Mayor? What about me losing 95% of my business? Anything can be done about that?
We still have to try to, the only thing we can do about that is try to see that you've got access to your building from people coming down that road.
Well, just Mayor, I was just going to say, I will personally go out and have staff meet me out there to take a look at the situation.
Okay.
But again, regarding the 90%, unfortunately, I, I don't know of anything at this moment we would be able to do with you losing a portion of your business. And I'm sure, you know, others have lost a percentage of their business as well. And we try to do advance notice. And, you know, I, you know, it's a fact that when you have a road project like that, it's going to disrupt business. And I know that you, you may know that, because I know you. You know, we went to high school together.
Right, right.
But I had Zips Hot Dogs at 3312 St. Mary's Road. You may remember that, next to the State Farm Office. And when they were out in St. Mary's Road, you know, couldn't get in my driveway, water was always off. And actually, I shut that business down. So I, I mean, I've experienced personally what road projects can do for you. So, but I will come by and have the appropriate staff to come by and talk to you.
Okay. Well, the only thing, City Manager, I just wanted to say, I've been in there 30 years.
Yeah.
And that's my livelihood.
Yeah.
And by me losing 95% of my business, I made it through COVID and a lot of other things. But now, this is like the end, like, you know. So, you know, it's my livelihood.
I understand.
So I, I welcome you to come out.
Yeah. And I'll definitely do that.
Okay.
I'll be in touch.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Hickey?
I, I just got a couple of questions for you. Being that, that's my district there. And, and I understand, you know, your concerns and everything. The, I think one of the routes, because I had another business owner out there on Morris Road reach out to me to get to his business. It's coming through Decatur Court area to try to get down to Morris Road off of, in that area there. And then the other would be all the way out Forest Road, taken out to Vista.
Right.
And, and coming, and coming that route there. And I had another constituent that called, called me. It's been very difficult for her to, you know, get the church. She's disabled and things. And, you know, I reached out to the engineer department myself, and, and they were just sharing with me that, you know, with this being, you know, something that, that we, the city's been planning on doing for a long time. They knew that, you know, it was going to create some problems. They came up with a very, for the most possible way for people to try to, you know, still get to the businesses. I think it was even on the news with KFC, how they're suffering too.
Right.
And, and, and the exhaust company that next to it. So I, I, I love to come out and just
I appreciate it.
Get, get with you and just, you know, take a look at things as well. So
Okay. I appreciate it.
Just want to let you know that we are concerned about the, you know, you losing business like you losing it.
Because we are one Columbus.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir.
I'd like to see that.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So I just want to just, you know, extend my time coming out and take a look with you as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Carther, it'll, it'll be looked at and try to see what we can come up with, see if there's some way to mitigate some of that, that issue. Counselor Anker?
Mr. McCarther, I might have missed your address. I'd like to ride by there also. Would you repeat?
Okay. It's 564 Morris Road.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'm your neighbor, by the way.
Right. You don't have to see the road.
Yes, sir. And I've got road construction. And I failed a Walmart safety test recently because of all the construction.
I will.
I want to come see your small business. I'm proud of what, you know, I don't even know what you do, but I look forward to being there.
I have a hot dog stand.
Thank you. I love hot dogs.
It's a restaurant.
All right. Counselor Huff?
Yes, sir. I met with some people yesterday on the Andrews Road side, that I was going to send an email in the morning. But I'll get with you later to try to set up a meeting so we can meet with the people on the other side. Morris Road on one side, Andrews on the other.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Carther. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next is Mr. Marvin Broadwater Senior regarding Southside Deserving Economic Development.
My name is Marvin Broadwater Senior. I live in the 31909 zip code. And I will go ahead and request my three minutes now, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Mr. City, Madam City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, administration staff, and citizens of Columbus. I pray that all of you are well. Thank you for your continued service to our community in whatever capacity you render. First, I cannot speak further in this hollock chamber without giving honor and homage to the memory of our former City Councilor, Judy Thomas. For her honesty and respect she showed me during our conversation about issues affecting the citizens of our great city. She was indeed a treasure to all of us. I'm here this evening to talk about the economic development, or shall I say, the lack of economic development in South Columbus. While we have made substantial movement with a few capital projects, such as a new high school, the improvement project on Buna Vista Road at the intersections of I-185, and a new football stadium, or the upgrade of the area affectionately known as the Spider Wheel. I'm talking about decisive economic development that will bring jobs like the Amazon warehouse in Midland. Projects that will assist citizens in battling poverty and unemployment. It is our time I'm talking about decisive economic development that will bring jobs like the Amazon warehouse in Midland. Projects that will assist citizens in battling poverty and unemployment. It is our time this body start to value all of our citizens regardless of their zip code or financial status by your collective vote. While it is true in most southern cities, there is little to none economic development on the south side of these cities. I refuse to believe and accept that with your expertise in development that we cannot bring effective economic development to South Columbus to assist our friends who live on the south side. I have full confidence that if this body chooses to, South Columbus will become a flourishing part of our city. I'm fully aware that many of you will state that the, that the development of South Commons is not a capital project investment, even though we typically define a capital project as large-scale initiative involving substantial investment in tangible assets or infrastructure, like roads or railways, as well as construction of new facility, manufacturing plants and power plants. Why not make an investment in our citizen with project that will produce jobs, not just for today, but twenty years from now? This type of economic development falls under the umbrella of productive development. After all, the greatest investment we can make in, in our city is our citizens. I sent all of you an email asking you to vote against placing the idea of not moving forward on the ballot for voters concerning South Commons, as this is a colossal mistake, in my humble opinion, that will have a lasting negative effect similar to the refusal to push for an interstate through our city. Remember, we lost a kill plant because of the interstate fiasco. This action leaves a perception that many, with many, that we choose to move forward with economic development in other areas of the city. But when it comes to the south side, which is where South Commons is located, we choose or elect to place that item on a ballot. You have made a plethora of controversial decisions within the last three years, and I'm familiar with most of them. And no one decided to offer a motion to place any of those actions on a ballot. Recently, we had twenty-three of twenty-seven citizens appear on the public agenda a few weeks ago to discuss their discontentment about one topic, about one topic, and no one thought to make a motion to place anything on a ballot. Over the last year and a half, we have used the word transparency on a plethora of occasions. As a Wesley Snipes character said in one of my favorite movies, let's kick the ballistics, which simply means, let's speak the truth and the whole truth. I sent this question to you all in an early email in which I have yet to receive an answer. I would ask that the council respond now, if possible, and answer this question. Isn't it true, if the referendum is placed on a ballot and it does not pass, the city will be responsible for a payment of three million dollars because of bonds issued? Which means, property taxes will have to be raised. Again, the council will be responsible for this action if it doesn't pass. Are you ready to move forward and take that chance? I have watched in the last twenty-three years.
Mr. Broadwater?
That's five.
I'll see you in a few minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, next, Ms. Teresa Elamine regarding exit four Buna Vista Road and the murder count. I don't, I don't see Ms. Elamine. Okay. We'll move to Ms. Natalie Nicole representing Role Model Academy of Arts regarding Public Works. Welcome, ma'am. If you just state your name and your zip code.
Good evening. Dr. Natalie Nicole of Role Model Academy of Arts, one two two eight Twenty-Fourth Street, Columbus, Georgia, three one nine zero one. Good evening. And I won't be before you long, and I won't need an additional three minutes. I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Role Model Academy and the community that Public Works is serving. They were actually there this morning cleaning up, and at the top of the spring, they were there mowing, and everything looks great. I was here last year this time, and we were discussing concerns about the amount of time coming out to mow and just the issues with trash and illegal dumping. And I just wanted to say, no matter if there was disagreement or didn't like what was being said, you all responded. You all were professional. You all kept in touch, and you kept your word, and you made sure that the area was taken care of. And I greatly, greatly appreciate that. It's a big difference in the community. Additionally, I would like to say that I expressed that there are still concerns with speeding, still concerns with illegal dumping that we need help with. The last thing I heard was on May, March fourth, I'm sorry, from Cogle, I'm sorry, forgive me, from District Seven, was that signs for littering don't, don't work and some, something else. But if, if it's not gonna work, we need to figure out something that we can do in the area to, a solution for the trash and for the illegal dumping that's having done with tires more so than anything in the area. I would appreciate a solution support in that area, and I thank you greatly. I was told that when my district doesn't respond, that I could reach out to the district-wide representatives. And so I want to say thank you to district chambers for always responding and always providing solutions that are very helpful. I'm very grateful for it, sir. Very grateful for it. And Deputy Goodwin, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Cogle?
Ms. Nicole, I just wanted to let you know that I had a long conversation with Chief Mathis this week and last week about the speeding and a lot of the crime in, in that particular area, as well as with Director Vance Beck about some of the other issues as far as signage. And so while the signage is under the engineering department, I know we, Chief Mathis and I have really, I think, come up with a good plan, particularly over the next, the rest of the school year for Hanan Elementary as far as slowing down some of that traffic. He has, he has been very receptive on being able to get some extra, some extra help out there. So you should see an increased amount of CPD traffic in there from now until, well, it would have been from last week until the end of the school year. So just want to let you know.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next is Ms. Catherine Tanner regarding voting rights and concerns about South Commons.
My handout is my speech and two items to look at. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and Council. As a born and raised Columbus, Georgia native, I would be remiss if I stayed silent about the corruption and backdoor deals that some have chosen to handpick for we, the citizens. I'm here tonight to address the fifty million dollar arrangement regarding Golden, House Senova's Park, as well as the grander surrounding area of the South Commons. I'll remind you of a few important things. City Council passed a resolution back in February of 2023 to remove deed restrictions on the city's South Commons land, paving the way for the potential relocation of the Double A Braves baseball team to Golden Park for the 2025 season. The resolution was passed in a two-minute vote, no public discussion, which led some councillors to feel rushed, poorly briefed, as they were not informed of the deed established in 1910 with the clause requiring a special election and two-thirds voter approval for any private development on that property. What was thrust upon the council was not only unethical, but it was illegal. The lack of transparency and public input in the decision to remove the deed restrictions disenfranchised the voters and violated our rights. Some city officials do what they do and continue to do it at their best to us, the truth, for their own self-gain, their greed, the disregard for our rights. But things will be changing rapidly, and some people might have new zip codes. I'm going to read an excerpt from a social media post made by our own Councilwoman, Toya Tucker, which is probably the most wonderful post I've ever read while I was on vacation and not supposed to be reading anything political. Power without accountability isn't strength, it's ego in disguise. When leaders, whether elected or appointed, begin labeling scrutiny as attacks, showing hostility toward differing voices, or silencing those who challenge them, they are no longer leading, they are managing dissent. And when managing dissent becomes the priority governing ends, real leadership doesn't stifle voices, it elevates them. It doesn't flinch at critique, it welcomes it. Because leadership at its core is about listening, evolving, and remembering who gave us the privilege to lead in the first place. Whether elected or appointed, no one is above accountability. And the moment we believe we are, is the moment we no longer deserve the title. Some of you were bamboozled into making the hasty decision now called Senova's Park. Those who knew should be ashamed of taking away the honorary name from the Golden family. And the triad, the three, know who you are, should take this as your notice to rectify the situation in a total reversal of your actions and a complete restoration of the original restrictions, which were, and I quote, and you have a copy of, that this land shall be kept open and used only for the purpose of a public park and playground and to be developed to such amusement and pleasure as proper authorities of the city may designate. And the land cannot be conveyed to anybody without the assent of two-thirds of the qualified voters of the city at a special election. So, to the triad, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and Mr. City Manager Attorney, not here, but Assistant. It is imperative that no RFP be issued until after the voters have had their vote. In closing, I love teaching. I love a teachable moment, and it usually isn't about my government in class, but I'm a Shrek fan, so it's like an onion. It's got many layers, and as you peel them back, you find corruption, lies, and more putrid, rancid funk. I am Eddie Murphy, and I love a poffay, just like anybody else loves a poffay. I don't know anybody that doesn't love a poffay. But I don't like an onion. And I don't like when I'm seeing when I'm peeling it back. But I do like what I see in the enlightenment of the councillors that are asking the questions, asking the hard questions, looking for the hard answers, trying to come up with what will make our city a better place for everyone.
Ms. Tanner, I'm sorry. Your five minutes is up. Thank you, though. You can stick around for three more minutes if you like.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next is Mr. Jay Nathan Smith requesting counsel fix the mistakes of the past.
Greetings, City Council. My name is Jay Nathan Smith, resident here in Columbus. Thank you to the previous speaker. I don't have to talk about that mistake. There seems to be so many here lately. Counsel, first of all, be of good cheer. No weapon formed against you is going to prosper. That's what the scripture says. If I was in church, I would say, look to your neighbor and tell your neighbor it's not going to work. And it's not going to work. I'm here, I'm going to go ahead and discuss a resolution that has gotten a lot of attention lately concerning AARP grants. There was a terrible mistake that was made. I don't have to invent the law. I don't have to stand here and make up anything, Mr. Mayor. We can just read from the resolution, and we'll see where the mistake was made. Before I do that, it's important to understand that a resolution is a directive, and it is instructive to all city employees. And when you couple a resolution with the city charter, Appendix Two, which is an ordinance, then we have legal responsibilities. I'm going to read the part of the resolution that says legal considerations. And I appreciate our new councillor asking a question. I had, I have not even spoken to you at all in, in weeks, if not a month or more. I had no idea that you was gonna ask the question, and I appreciate that, what you asked, sir. The legal considerations, it says, the city attorney will review all grant agreements prior to obtaining the city manager's signature. How many city managers do we have? We have one. He sits right there. To authorize a deputy or anybody else to sign something is against the resolution. You did not follow the orders. You did not follow the directive of this council. It's an unauthorized signature on an official act of the legislator, and you cannot do that. Now, the way to do it, as we've heard already tonight, is you have to come back to council. And you have to ask them to amend it. And by coming to a council to have them to amend the resolution, you would have taken care of the important part of Appendix Two that says you have to disclose. So if you asked them to amend, you would have been taking care of the disclosure, but no.
Mr. Smith, you need to direct your comments to me.
I'm, I'm looking at everybody, but I'm talking to you, sir. The shoe fits, don't wear it. And so I, I hear some amens. That's wonderful. And so what we have, what we have is employees that are insubordinate to this council. They're insubordinate. And what are you gonna do about it, counsel? I know that you've received a cease and desist, but at this point, you haven't done anything yet. There has been no public comments from you all. I need you to act. I have been, for the last year and a half, calling on you, Mr. Mayor, to call in the city attorney, I mean, the, the Attorney General. I'm pleased that the NAACP and the IMA and the Eco Latino Carrier have joined me in the call to call in the Attorney General. Sir, I don't believe you have it in you to do it, Mr. Mayor, so I'm asking this council, tonight, make the motion.
Mr. Smith, time's up.
Call in the Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. City Manager, it's your agenda.
Mr. Mayor, number one on my agenda is to reallocate fifteen thousand dollars of FY.
Motion second to approve, item one. Is there any discussion on that item? Hearing none, please put it on the screen, and councillors, you can enter your.
Mayor, that is for Panasonic Toughbooks for CPD.
That's approved.
Next, I've got a property. Next, I've got a property purchase, 5803 Moon Road.
Motion second to approve item two, any discussion on that item? Counselor Anker, is that to the...
Long-term plans were to do with the site after we procure it, how are we going to maintain it over the years? And are there any other options available that we know of today before we proceed forward with it, Mr. City Manager?
Well, I, I would say, the first thing is to, it'll be green space owned by the city. And like you will see later on my agenda, oftentimes, you know, property that we have no use for, we will deal with adjacent property owners on either side or backs up to it. I don't know at this point, but that's a possibility of what could, could happen with that because ultimately, we want that property back on the tax roll, and we don't want Public Works having to go out there and maintain it because people next door will say, you know, oh, you, you know, so...
That was my concern. I wondered, I don't know, understand the legal parameters, but if there's a way to put a deed restriction on it where somebody buys it in the future, maybe we put it out for auctions so that we don't have to maintain it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I'm satisfied, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counselor Chambers?
Okay. No, I support the purchase, I, I just have one question for point of clarification. The 166,000, where did that, I mean, was the property appraised, or was that the fair market?
It was appraised, and that's what we've, the delay has been waiting on the appraisal, yes.
Thank you.
Was that voted on, Mayor?
Yes, sir, it was. No, it was not, was it? Now, if you, can we put that back on the screen? Thank you, I didn't realize we had skipped it. Councilors, you can, once it's put up there, you can enter your votes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is any opposed? All right, that's approval of item two.
And so, this next piece of property, to Counselor Anker's question, this is similar, it's a small alleyway that we have no use for, but we're going out to maintain it. Of course, we had appraised, and we are asking you to approve this property going to the Webb Family Holdings. And that way, we don't have to maintain it anymore, it's back on the digest, and, you know, it's, it's not enough property that we could ever do anything with, and so...
Motion and a second to approve item four, I'm sorry, item three. Any discussion on that? All right, please put it on the screen. We seem to be having some technical difficulties. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That's approved.
And so, this next one, Mayor, is the community care program for the medically underserved and inmate population, formerly known as indigent care, but, you know...
Motion and a second to approve item four, any discussion on that one? All right, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
And Mayor, this is something that I know a committee of councilors have worked very closely on, and it's been three years or so that they've been working on this, and this allows a chance to, to move things forward. There will be program administration and oversight to what's going to happen here. It will have a community care program administrator. We've already had that position graded by our consultant, medical, mental health providers, other services, and Columbus Fire EMS, Correct Care Program that you've heard us talk about. So, this allows that program to move forward at this time. Then I've got Marathon...
Motion and a second to approve grants, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
And this is a Fire EMS grant, $5,000, there's no match. Then I've got Peach Little League batting cage donation.
Motion second to approve Peach Little League batting cage donation. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
And this batting cage is valued at $41,199 from Peach Little League, and we appreciate that. And the batting cage will be adjacent to Wilkinson Field in Lake Bottom. I've got purchases.
All right, there's a motion and a second to move, to approve A, B, and C, is there any that anyone would like pulled? All right, all in favor of approval of those three items, please say aye. Oh, that's okay. Counselor Anker.
Mr. City Manager, I've only been to three meetings in four weeks, we spent $1.5 million on vehicles, I'm happy to proceed forward with this, but I do have the same question. I'm trying to catch up, and I want to understand the value to the taxpayer. I don't see pictures of the old vehicles, I, I remember the buses, 100,000 mile limit. There's a lot of data flowing through here, there's a lot of money flowing, and, and it seems like our future, we, we do things out of budget, and our future's going to be tighter. And I'm just trying to establish that, that we're spending the money where the value hits our citizens, sir. If you can help me with that on these purchases.
And, and let me just say, Counselor, on each of these agenda items, these are, you know, it tells you at the bottom, like this one, for example, on the Suzu box trucks.
Right.
It says, "Funds are available in FY25 budget as follows." And so, when we went through the budget process last year, this time, these vehicles were approved in that budget process.
Right.
And so, this is just a delay, they could have gone out and purchased, if we had the specs and the vendors available, they could have gone out and bought those trucks July 1st of last year. So they're budgeted, funded in the current budget.
Yes, sir.
They're just getting around to getting them.
I got you. We, we do reappropriate things like the Panasonic Tough Books when that's necessary. And so, therein lies my question just about the vehicles, and, and do, are we replacing old vehicles?
Oh, yeah, these are replacement, and they're justified in the budget process.
Thank you, sir.
That you'll be participating in, in the next few weeks.
Yes, sir, I look forward to that, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, there was a motion and a second on A, B, and C. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, those purchase items are approved.
And so, Mayor, I do have, and, two updates, and the first one is Director Holly Browder, Director Parks and Rec on pool lifeguards, and she's been talking about that over the last few weeks, and I know that you've tried to do some things to help with the pay for lifeguards so that we can be more competitive in recruiting. But she's going to do an update on where we are with our pools, and I think you'll find this is going to be exciting for you and for those here and for those listening by TV, where we are with our pools, and we're still struggling, challenged with lifeguards, but the pools are looking good. Director Browder.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening again, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Yes, I feel like we have some really positive news to share tonight, so we are excited about this. So we are moving forward with our pools. Just some quick photos to share with all of you and our citizens on what these new pools will look like. This gives you an idea of Rigdon, Shirley, and Salmon, so I'll let everybody kind of take a look. You're going to see they have similarities, as I've mentioned before in my presentations, but each one has its own little flavor, but they're all built exactly the same, more or less, so it allows people to have the same amenities. It gives kids the opportunity, though, to feel like they've gone to somewhere else, another community or somewhere else, by visiting the different locations, and that was our goal. We want kids to have the same amenities, but maybe have a different theme if they go from one park to the other. So that's, that's why you see a little bit of few differences, a fish on one, an octopus on another, and a frog on the next. We are excited to announce that on May 28th, we'll be opening day for the pools this year. That keeps us in line with what we've done previously, and so our expectation is that we'll open double churches, Salmon, Rigdon, and Shirley Winston Pool on May 28th. That would be the first Wednesday after Memorial Day, and that's because we're typically closed on Monday and Tuesday anyway, so this puts us in line with our regular schedule. We're going to retain the same operating hours as our expectation at this point, which is Wednesday through Friday, from 12 to 6, and on Saturdays and Sundays, from 11 to 7. And as I mentioned a moment ago, of course, we'll continue to be closed on Mondays and Tuesdays, so that won't change. One thing we're looking forward to doing this year is having a celebration, so we're going to welcome, welcome folks back on that second week that we're open, on that Thursday. We're looking forward to having a luau celebration at each of the pools from 11 to 2 o'clock. And so, we've got the radio stations coming out, we're going to just make it a big party for the kids, kind of the kickoff of summer, if you will. So it'll be a kickoff for the pools, but also a kickoff to summer, as kids will be completely out of school at that point in the community, so that everybody can attend. The other was that we can do all four simultaneously on the same day so that all neighborhoods get to celebrate. Next are splash...
Excuse me, Holly, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Tucker.
I, I was waiting to the end of our presentation.
All right, you can continue.
No problem. And so, next are our splash pads. Many of you who've attended tonight would see when you first came in tonight, we have a great new splash pad located outside City Services that we're super excited about that we're going to be bringing online to open very shortly. Here are the different amenities that you can see. It also has public restrooms with changing areas for families, there's benches, we've got a few amenities, some trash cans and things like that, that got to be completed in the signage, but we expect to have it open in the coming weeks, obviously before May 28th. We'll have that ready to go, and we're planning a ribbon cutting for, sometime in June at this time. But we're excited about this, this will be the first splash pad that's operated by the city, by Parks and Recreation, so we're super excited about this opportunity as well. And this provides us something that will be a little bit different for the kids, so if they don't want to go to a pool, or they just live here in the neighborhood, they can walk here, they can come here and benefit from having this facility. Also, of course, this is geared towards younger children that don't always have the same opportunities at our pools because they're younger and they're smaller, so this should be a lot of fun. This facility and this system is activated by push button, so the hours will be from 9 to 7 each day, and that's just so that our staff can come through, make sure we've cleaned the trash, the bathrooms after each day, and so it won't be able to be activated by the public after 7 o'clock, meaning that there's a push button, the kids can walk up, they can play for a number of minutes, it will fade away and stop, they just go over, they push the button, and it reactivates, and they can play all over again. This is what the city service center looks like outside right now. Also, you know, as I've mentioned in previous presentations, we have Carver Park, we will have a splash pad at Carver Park. We're slightly delayed, but we're still on, still on schedule for the most part to have it open around the same timeframe as our pools, so we're looking forward to having it onsite as well. It's very similar to what the facility here at City Services looks like, and I know, looking at the photos, people may wonder, how are we going to turn it around? But if any of you witnessed how quickly this one was able to be brought up from the ground, it doesn't take much time, once they, once they start pouring and putting everything in, it's pretty quick, so we look forward to having this splash pad as well. It will operate with the same hours, same days, same information as I shared about the splash pad here, and ultimately, that's what we expect for all of our splash pads. The city manager recognized that, yes, we have a lot of positives going, and this is not a negative, of course, but I wanted to certainly bring about a lifeguard update here. This information was what I had as of last week when I put together the presentation, but as of today, we now have approximately 300 applicants that have all been contacted that we've received applications for lifeguards. At the time when this was, was put together, I had 218 people, and 218 people have been contacted. Once we receive the applications from the HR department, we have a form standard letter that gets sent to each applicant, and the email tells them how to reach out to the department, when they can come for their swim test, or the prerequisites for being a lifeguard, which are Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. All we ask is they let us know so we can be sure that we have our instructor onsite to assist anybody and to administer their certificate, or their prereq certification. Yes, sir?
I can just ask, is that 52 and 73, is that a total of 73?
No, it's 73. We have 52. We have 52 now, we need 73 more, our target goal is 125.
Is that what they're aiming at?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But I wanted to really explain because of the process, of the 218 we had last week, 18 people pulled their applications, probably because they couldn't swim at all. We can't teach people in a short period of time, we can't teach people to swim completely in that timeframe, we can assist them if they can swim on how to be able to do the necessary techniques to be able to pass the swim test, or the prerequisites. Forty-six people at that time had come for their prerequisites, 24 passed, 15 did not pass, and seven didn't show up, even though they were scheduled to appear. At that point, 11 people had been certified through that, and we also already had 20 lifeguards that were currently at the Aquatic Center next door, and we also have 21 lifeguards that are returning that were prior lifeguards from last summer. So that's how we arrive at 52 lifeguards. Why we still need 73 more is we're trying to reach the target of 125 with 25 per pool, there's five pools counting the indoor pool, so that gives us our 125. A lot of question about, there's been a lot of question about, what does it take to be a lifeguard? You simply just can't walk in and think you want to be a lifeguard, which is great, and we love the enthusiasm, but they, people have to be able to swim, at least some, enough to be able to pass the lifeguard pretest. These are requirements. There's 150 yard swim, two minutes of tread, and 100, another 150 yard swim, then they have to retrieve a 10 pound brick from the eight foot depth of water that simulates being able to pull someone off the bottom of a pool. This is serious, we are a life-saving capacity when it comes to lifeguards, and we want to be sure that we have the very best to save, should it be necessary. We hope it's not, but should it be necessary, that's the reason why. Also, when it comes to our lifeguard process, there is no cost. If they come to us, and I say this because I've had a lot of questions about, people can't afford to do the certification, that's not true. The city and Parks and Recreation, we do the instruction, we do the certification, there's no cost, as long as they agree to work for us for the summer. They do not pay the certification costs that other entities around the city of Columbus are currently advertising, so that is a difference for us, and I do believe some of those are charging about $200, and we do not. We are sincere and serious when it comes to wanting our community to help us and to serve in the lifeguard capacity, so we're willing to make it a little bit easier for our youth to get summer jobs. So that is part of this lifeguard process. Of course, this is where we are. Coming up, we have two current lifeguard classes for May 1st and 4th. I checked today to see where we were, we already have 21 people that are registered in that class, and we're going to try to take as many as we can get, as that are willing to do so. And then we'll do it again on the 8th through the 10th, we'll do another class, and then if necessary, we'll do another class after that, but we're hoping to get a little bit closer each time to our target of 125 people. And the only way we can do that is just keep chipping away, and the more people who apply, the more opportunities that we have and they have to become candidates for us. We know it's not a job for everyone, we get that, but you are in a life-saving capacity for our community, whether they be young or old, so it's serious to us. With that, are there any questions?
Counselor Tucker.
Yes, thank you for this update, and it's, a lot of people are asking questions and also making comments in reference to the certification, I'm happy you put that out there, that is free for, if you work through CCG, but people are saying that $200 is not. For us, it's free. So, that's one of the main things, and I know we did a presentation the last time where you showed the difference between how much our lifeguards make versus the surrounding, like YMCA, Fort Benning, in different areas. I think that's important to show, that we are extremely competitive. Some people are saying, folks are paying $20, I don't know, you, you would know...
You, you would know that more than I, I do. I have not seen-
I haven't seen that locally. Obviously, in the, in the chart that I prepared previously, when we benchmarked, based on what date that was, other areas and nationally, they are paying more than we are. But we, we felt like what we were going to ask for, and what we, we came to you with, was a, was a fair amount, based on what others in the community were, were paying their guards. We felt like that was a fair, fair amount, based on what our expectations were. Yes, we may not be paying what others in the state are, but we're paying more than any, well, other than Fort Benning. At the time when we presented the information, we were, we would now be paying more, other than Fort Benning, to my knowledge, or we are commensurate or equal to those others.
Okay. Yeah, that was one of the things that I keep seeing is this $20 figure. And I don't, like I said, I don't know, based on the numbers that we saw, were competitive in reference to that. I do have another question in reference to the summer. Are we stopping the season when school starts? Or are we going into like just weekends for the Labor Day timeframe? How are we-
We can reevaluate. Right now, our plan would be, is that we would stop once school starts. And the reason for that is, we've never been able to muster and garner enough lifeguards to continue to operate. Our lifeguards are high school kids, or college kids. And if they're college kids, that's because they've come home for the summer. They live here, and their families from Columbus. They may have gone away to college, but they've come back here just for the summer. So when they have to go back to college, of course, they're not local, they don't travel home on the weekends. So we lose all of our staffing when it comes to the weekends or weekdays, because they've gone back to college. We can certainly evaluate and see if we have any, but the last, even the years before we had closed the pool, we've not found it to be. Also, we have not had the attendance. But the other positive to that is, with the splash pads that we will be bringing online, we would not close those. We would anticipate leaving those up, open to the public, to allow for people to have somewhere to go, when we obviously know we're here in the South. And in August, even though we go back to school, it's still considerably warm outside area. Yes. So we would certainly leave that open as an opportunity for families to enjoy, because we won't have to manage with lifeguards on duty, which we would necessarily have.
And like-
I was going to say, I think one of the main concerns that I'm, I've been hearing from, like, families is that they haven't had opportunities for, you know, like Shirley B., 2017 has been closed for so long. If we could look at possibly opening on, you know, even if it's just one day on a Saturday, to have additional activity, if we had the staff to do that and, and keep it open until that Labor, you know, until after that Labor Day weekend.
And typically, what we've done is exactly what you described. But we evaluate the number of lifeguards that we have access to. And we may do Salmon Road this weekend or these days, and Shirley B. these days, or Rigdon. So you move it around, but it's based on-
The staff.
Yeah, and you're moving those lifeguards to those weekends, because that's all you have, so. We'll, we'll-
If we can look at it, I think that, that will really make, I know, some of the parents and families happy, because that was one of the things that they were seeing. And, and they've shared it. They are super excited that the pools, you know, are opening. I'm just hoping, and we talk about, you know, the positive, putting the positive out there. And I'm happy, from the time that we spoke to today, you have more, you know, applicants that, that, that have applied. But I'm, I'm hoping that we can get the lifeguards that, that we need, because it's imperative, safety first. We want to make sure that we're able to open all the pools on the hours that we're putting out there.
Yes, ma'am. And I probably need to reiterate, because I know there have been questions surrounding, how did we try to advertise? When did we start advertising? What have we done? This, and I've brought presentations to you all, you know, over the last six months. We've been advertising for months. We didn't just start a few weeks ago, we started months ago. We have a billboard campaign on digital billboards all over the city. We've done television, radio, we've done all kinds of things. We've gone to every local high school. We've spoken to their counselors, or whoever is in charge of career development for high school students, summer jobs. We've spoken to them, and if they will let us into their schools, we have physically sent staff and onto property, and have spent time during their lunch hour, or during job fairs, or whatever we could do to reach out to the schools, we have done. So if they didn't come to lunch that day, or they didn't get the information sent through their school, I'm sorry, but we have reached out, because for us, it's an all-hands-on-deck trying to get lifeguards for the summer.
And I, I will add, and I, and that's why I say, I know we show different parts of the presentations at different times. But the last time when you presented, you did add a list of where you've gone and where you were going, like Central High School, and actually, at the time, it said Fort Moore, but Fort Benning now. So I'm, I'm at this, a, as you see, students are, some of them can't swim, and they want to be lifeguards. You gotta be able to swim to be a lifeguard, but, um, thank you. And I do, I do want to, I'm not sure the date. I know you're saying, you're kind of projecting May 28th for Carver Park Splash Pad to be open. One of the things that I wanted to ask the Assistant City Attorney to look at, if you can share with me, and I got to get with the Chief of Police and the Sheriff. But myself and the Director were speaking, I think, last week. I can't remember what day, it's probably like before, before Easter. Changing the, the Saturday to 7:00 and 7:00, if, if we could, to give an opportunity for parents to come on the weekend for, for Carver Park opening. Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Kogle.
Thanks for, for, for the update. It was quite helpful, because I know, I know I'm also garnishing a lot of questions. What is the minimum age requirement for a lifeguard?
So a lifeguard has to be 15 years of age before we can certify them through the American Red Cross.
Okay, is that like, they have to be on the, on the date of, on the date of certification? Or is it calendar year, end of the year?
My apologies, I misspoke slightly. For them to come to work for us, for the city of Columbus, they have to be 15. So I'll give you an example. If you have a student, because we've gotten quite a few calls. If they're a great swimmer, for example, they're maybe on the swim team here, one of the schools, because that obviously happens a lot. If they're 14, but they'll turn 15 during the summertime, say they first of June, or something like that, they can go ahead and take the Red Cross test. But they cannot fill out an application for us, for the city, until they're 15 years of age. And then at that point, they can fill out an application to be considered to become a lifeguard.
Awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
My daughter is planning out her lifeguard takeover, so you have to wait two years, though. So, she's, she's down sometimes. But on that, on that note, I mean, I grew up in the pool, and I grew up in lifeguarding, and that was my main source of income all through college and beyond. And has, when, when we were doing it, and we also had the problem of finding, finding guards, so I think this is just a thing. But we, we also ran a junior guard program, which was pretty successful as far as grooming the next generation, so to speak. Is that something that-
Yes.
You guys are going to be-
Yes, we've been discussing that as an opportunity. We had discussed it previously. So especially now, with us being able to bring the pools back on, and the demand being greater, absolutely, that's a consideration. And I would hope that maybe we could work with some of the other departments in the city to see how we make that come to fruition, for them to have internships, or like summer youth workers, or something, so that they can get that firsthand experience, working with our older, and I say older, they're not a lot older, but with our other lifeguards that are high school or college age.
Yeah, might, just, might be something that we could maybe, even if it's just next year, put together for, I know we do the, the punch pass for all over Parks and Recreation to keep the kids busy during the summer. And might be just a good way to groom the next generation of lifeguards. And I also just wanted to take a small point of privilege and say congratulations to Parks and Recreation. The Hurricanes reached out to, reached out to me the other day and said, because of our new lightning policy, they have, they have been awarded the Georgia Short Course Championships for 2026, over, and we were chosen over Savannah and a couple pools out of Atlanta. So that will be a significant- My, my daughter swam at, at short course this year for A and B cuts, and there was probably no less than 3,000 kids there. So it's, that will be a significant impact. So, great job, and buckle up, prepare for, for the parents.
All right. Holly, I think that's all the questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Browder. Last thing on my agenda, Mayor, I've got the Warden here, Herbert Walker. And the Finance Director will come along with him. He is going to exceed his budget. She's going to tell you why and what he needs. He will tell you, she will tell you why.
Correct. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Madam Assistant City Attorney. As the City Manager mentioned, the Warden of the Muskogee County Prison is here, subject to ordinance 13-39. That says, if you, as a department, elected office, or agency that receives budgeted funds from the consolidated government, you must come back to this council if you expect that you will exceed those funds. There was a new contract for the inmate food, for inmate food services at the prison. This was approved by the council back in February. There were some price increases, just due to, well, inflationary, I should say, price increases included in that contract. The Warden, we anticipate that the Warden will need an additional $247,000 to make it through the end of the fiscal year. And again, that is due to the price increases relative to the food contract that was approved a couple sessions ago by the council. So we would need a motion-
Motion to approve that?
-in order to approve those appropriations.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I think that's approved.
All right.
Thank you. Warden, thank you. Mayor, that concludes my agenda. Okay. All right. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I, I had a, a couple of questions. One, I know next week, we're gonna have the, the budget. And it's probably going to be pretty extensive. I'm not sure what other items we have on the agenda. But can we get an update on the RFP for the business license in reference to the Revenue Department?
Yes.
All right. And I don't know if any other counselors have been receiving phone calls. I know this, like, the business time of the year. I'm trying to see, Assistant City Attorney. I'm not sure when we did the coin-operated amusement machine ordinance. I know you sent it to me. I don't know what that, was that last year that we did the amendment with the grandfather? So we, we did the original the year before, but we had made a adjustment. Was it last year?
I'd have to look, but my recollection is it was summer of 2024.
Yeah, I can't, I can't remember the exact date. But we put a grandfather clause in the, the ordinance. If the business owner had been in, in business prior to that ordinance, and they had the coin-operated machines, and I think Counselor Huff was there, that they would not be required to adhere to the, the distance portion of the, the ordinance, in reference to the survey. So now in the ordinance, it's a distance that the, the business cannot be within a certain distance of a school, a church, a housing authority location. And I'm trying to see what else. I think those were the three. And, and we also, we also decreased the amount of machines that they could have in their store. Was it four, or we did it through a resolution?
My recollection is the number of machines was always limited to six. And it still is, because that's the amount state law allows you to limit it to.
Yeah.
And they're telling me it was July of '24.
It was July of '24. But we did, and I, we did minimize, because before it was more machines than that, and we put it to, to the six. Yeah, it was 10, and we brought it, brought it down.
But that was before the original ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. So what some of the business owners are saying, the ones that were grandfather in, they're calling, saying they're being required to pay a $600 fee for a survey, to, to show that distance. But if they're grandfather in, wouldn't they be exempt from paying that, that $600 fee?
I will let the Finance Director speak to how the surveys are administered for this particular ordinance.
Right, so that was ordinance 24-042. And in terms of the grandfather provision that was placed in the ordinance, it reads that the locations which were operating with a valid license from the state to operate coin-operated amusement machines permitted at that business location prior to April 1st of 2024 may have a city license with coin-operated amusement machines permitted, issued for the same location if application for a city license is made before September 1st of 2024. So in order for that part of the grandfather provision to apply, the business, if they had a valid state license, they would have had to have applied for a city license prior to, with the authorization, I should say, to you, to have the coin-operated machines prior to September 1st of '24. Part B of the ordinance says that locations which perceive a city license with coin-operated amusement machines permitted may have such license issued or renewed for the same location if application therefore is made within one year of the date that the business operations for the previous licensee cease. So that was a second sort of grandfather provision in that that location could qualify for a new licensee, so long as it had been within a 12-month or one-year period that the old licensee held a license.
So basically, you're saying that their license expired? Is that, is that what is, we're causing them to have to pay the $600?
Well, it's the distance restrictions that is within the ordinance that requires the survey. The $600 fee is the contracted amount that we pay our surveyor to go out and perform surveys.
Okay, because see, I guess when we, because we met, and we had those business owners, I think it was at the Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge's office when we had met. And specifically, trying to address the grandfather clause for those businesses who had been in operation prior to this ordinance. So some of those ones are saying, they don't understand why they have to pay the $600 if they were grandfathered in. They're thinking that they're grandfathered in based on them having a valid license prior to this ordinance.
So if they had a valid state license, and they made application to the city prior to September 1st of 2024, they would not have to pay for a survey.
So that's, so if they have a valid state license prior to September?
Prior to April 1st.
Of 2024.
That's correct.
Okay, so, and I, I'm just, I think that some may, like, we have had before, I think it was the Taco Tuesday that came up, and, you know, as for, I think we might have some, some business owners that's concerned about- that's concerned about this portion that we did. And just making sure that we explain the process to them. That way they'll truly understand what's going on. And then another issue that has been kind of like a hot topic is the business license renewal regarding paying the actuals versus the estimates. Can you explain that? Because I, and I'm telling people they're just gonna have to come and come speak and get on the agenda. But if they are coming in to pay for their license, their business, I mean, their, not their license, I'm sorry, their occupational taxes. The individuals are saying that they're having to pay the estimate and the actual. How does that work in reference to paying the occupational taxes? Are we requiring people to pay the actual amount or a estimate based on previous years? I mean, how are we doing that?
So the occupation tax return has two tax years on the form. There is a column, column A, for the prior year in which you must report your actuals. There is a column B, a second column, for estimated receipts. In accordance with the city code, you're supposed to provide an estimate that is at least what your actuals were for the prior year. So from an occupation tax return standpoint, the actual column, most people, when you come and open a business license, you can either, you can give us an estimate. Most people will give us an estimate, I should say, and pay $75 for the license. Whatever they pay in terms of their estimate, that carries over to the following year when they're filing their return based on the actual gross receipts that they've earned. So that shows up on the return as a prepayment credit. So whatever the actual receipts are for the prior year, we would do the calculations based on their tax rate, determine what they owe, subtract their prepayments from that amount, and then they pay the difference. And so then for the second part of the return, they are supposed to provide us an estimate. And it just kind of rolls over from year to year with the actuals that you report and the estimates that you're reporting for the current year.
No, I was just asking. I think that this is good and hopefully people are watching. And some of the questions that I'm sure you're getting, and I know I received several people to reach out to me in reference to this. And this just helps so I can let them know to look at the council meeting and to get their explanation.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Huff.
Yes, ma'am. Let me back into it, the last part that Counselor Tucker just finished with. That's pretty routine and what they do every year with all the businesses. We come in and we pay, we give an estimate. We come in with the estimate from the following year. And then if we're over, we just pay the difference and keep moving. And you go at least, she said, at least that amount. If you're anticipating a real increase, then the smarter move is to go ahead and pay a little extra so you won't have so much to pay at the end of the following year. But going back into the gaming organizations. They had, I think originally, 10 machines. And we came up with six machines. The distance requirement was what we were trying to guard against existing businesses having schools and churches to move into the area so that it would not affect those that were already preexisting businesses. Anybody, any new business coming in would have to adhere to the fact that there was a school or a church nearby. And the dates that you gave, they were accurate as far as that, I think it was an April date. Yeah, and the ones that were already in business to protect them from that part. But I think the part you have to explain to me again is on the surveying pieces. Is that for new ones coming in or expansion of existing ones?
Well, the survey would be for those businesses that don't meet these grandfather provisions.
Okay.
So you would have had to have had a state license prior to April 1st of '24. And you would have had to had a city license that permitted the COAMs prior to September, or by September 1st of '24.
So those dates we came up with, as long as you met those dates, you're fine?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
No further questions.
That's it.
That's it.
Just a question from me. Do you just walk around with all those pieces of paper and folding? Because every time you ask a question about this subject or that subject, she pulls out another piece of paper, you know? And I'm just curious.
In my magic bag.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Repro team, that's all I have.
Okay, now we go to the clerk's agenda.
Good evening. On the clerk's agenda, the first item we have is a board memo. This is listing the terms of the Downtown Development Authority and their need to reconvene. This authority issues bonds to finance private industrial and business projects for the downtown area. And a need has arisen. So we do need to go ahead and get those handled tonight and probably the next meeting as well. Next, we have a resignation of Doris Bishop resigning from her seat on the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission.
All right, is there a second? Motion second, receive the resignation, letter of resignation. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion second to receive the minutes. Are there any that anybody would like pulled or any edits? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I did want to ask for add-on resolution to excuse Counselor Davis from tonight's meeting.
Motion second for to excuse Counselor Davis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Approved.
Next, we have board appointments. The first ones are the mayor's appointments. And any nominations may be confirmed at this meeting. We have the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority. We have the CPA seat, the Corporate Employment Attorney seat, and the Law Enforcement Representative. I know, Mr. Mel, you've been working on these.
I'll have them by next Wednesday, next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the Housing Authority of Columbus. Mr. Greenman is eligible to serve another term. This is the mayor's appointment, sir. Yes, sir. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. For the Board of Tax Assessors, we have Clayton Hood.
Motion second to approve Mr. Hood. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, for the Employee Benefits Committee, we have Directors Holly Browder and Nancy Boran.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Then we have the Land Bank Authority Reynolds Bickerstaff.
There's a motion second to confirm Mr. Bickerstaff. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority, we have the seat for the promotional entity. This entity will need to work with professional hockey. Next, we have the Trade Center representative, the River Center representative. And I believe Counselor Kogle has a nominee for the CBB. Thank you, ma'am. And this one can actually be confirmed now.
Motion second to confirm. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, she's confirmed.
No, ma'am. The one for Boran and Browder were both voted on at the same time. Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
All right, just a second. He did, it's on there. I was just trying to get him turned on.
Okay, thank you, sir. Can we nominate someone? His name is Jay Pitts. And he's on the authority for the Trade Center. And he expressed interest in the Sports and Entertainment District representing the Trade Center. I called Haley Tillery to ask her if he had her support. And she said, as long as I don't lose him. So I don't know if this is the proper time to say that. But I would like to understand that rule. No, he's a small business owner. He owns a medical clinic. He's a...
This is somebody that will represent the Trade Center. And I guess with him serving as the authority, Assistant City Attorney, I don't know how it could be anybody but an authority member. Wait a minute, I'm getting to you. There you go.
So, tell me again, his current position, his council appointment?
He's a new board member on the authority for the Trade Center. He's probably the newest board member. And when this came open, I received a text from him, and I didn't even speak to him. And I've been trying to find out if that is appropriate, that he could serve on two authorities at one time. And I called Hillary also and just spoke with her today.
What would the legislative intent be? Is that to hire somebody, is that to put somebody on the authority that works at the Trade Center and represents the Trade Center interest? Or is it somebody who's on the authority?
It just says Trade Center Representative.
What was him?
He's a small business owner.
He's a current member of the Trade Center Authority.
Should be on the...
Be on the Civic Center, Sports Entertainment Authority.
The new Sports and Entertainment Authority. So he'd be a voluntary board member on both of them.
Well, typically, people cannot serve on two authorities unless there's a special ordinance that permits it.
I thought we hit it dead hard.
And there's some lists, you know, we can look into that.
Maybe we'll look into it. Because I think it's been mentioned to me, somebody that did serve on two authorities.
Yeah, there are definitely two double services.
So can we get an affirmation on that, please?
But the point is, when you, it's whether the position is appointed by council for each one, whether council's appointing somebody to two entities.
Gotcha.
But there can be exceptions, and there are.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have the Downtown Development Authority. We have Alan Tabor and Brad Coppidge, and, excuse me, and Carl Douglas. And Counselor Crabbe is nominating these individuals to serve another term. We'll list them for confirmation in the next meeting. We have the seat of Will Barnes. And we actually will need a nominee for that seat. We have Billy Blanchard, Stephen Butler. Both of them are eligible, but we're waiting on a response. We're working with the authority's attorney. Then we have the seat of Ernest Smallman. He is not eligible because he currently serves on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And lastly, we have a council hearing, and I'm going to yield to the Assistant City Attorney.
Okay, we have a couple of folks. I think Counselor Tucker had something?
I had a question in reference to the Sports and Entertainment Authority. I think we nominated quite a few people and confirmed them already. Have they been, how are we doing the appointments for their swearing-in? Are we waiting until July or are we doing it before then?
Typically, they come to my office. When they get to my office, they call them and schedule a time to come in.
Okay.
But they have to be sworn in before they can cast a vote, so...
So are we doing it like now or are we doing it...
We are. There are some that have already been, we have an ongoing oath list. So as new members are appointed, we keep adding to that list. Once we get the signed oath from the mayor's staff, we take them off. So some of them are listed on there. There's a few that have not because I'm trying to make sure I get the terms exactly right because they're staggered. And so I know that you and I spoke about Herman Lewis today.
Yes.
He has not been contacted yet. So once I can get the terms set, then he'll get an email from me stating that he's been appointed. And from that point, we send it to the mayor's staff to be scheduled.
Okay, yes, he was asking in reference to the process because he was just waiting for a phone call. And I told him I would ask once I got the counsel. Also, I see in reference to this, and I know we said Trade Center Representative. I don't know why I thought it was Trade Center Authority in reference to the Sports and Entertainment. So you know how on the list, we had Golf Authority, somebody from the Golf Authority? And so it is listed right now as Trade Center, but it should be Trade Center Authority. So what happened is the, like with the Golf Authority, the chair nominated Gerald Mowling from the Golf Authority. So the Trade Center Authority Representative would nominate, the chair would nominate a person from that authority, just like the Sports Council, Herman Lewis was nominated by the chair. So these were chair, these were positions on authorities or boards and not employees. So if he is... That's the way it was supposed to be written?
Yeah, I think that's the key. Just go back and we can take a look at it, clean it up, make sure that states that. Because it would have to tell you that the way to get them on there would be to have them recommended by the chair.
Yeah, and I think...
Which I think is a good idea, it's fine, it's just...
Yeah.
Need to get it.
People represent, you know, are picked by the Trade Center Authority, say, to represent the Trade Center, but they're not necessarily voting members of the Trade Center Authority itself.
Yeah, I think we probably just need to pull the ordinance up and see if it said Trade Center, I mean, Authority. But I thought for certain that we were doing the authority.
I think the easiest way to move forward is for you to take a look at that ordinance and see what it says. You obviously, the wishes of council is that it be appointed by the chair of the authority. Because I think Mr. Pitts would make a great authority member.
And that it be a member of that authority.
I think that's what we're saying. That was, that's the way it was done. We just need to be consistent because the Golf Authority...
Would you see if that's clear enough in the ordinance, if that's the intention?
I actually have the ordinance in front of me.
Yes, ma'am.
It's ordinance 25-011. And it says, "One member each will represent the Trade Center, the River Center, CBB, the Sports Council, and the Golf Authority." So it just says Trade Center.
So we need to...
Someone shall represent if it doesn't say they're members.
Do we need them here?
If they wanted to be a recommendation of the chair, that needs to be codified as well.
I would agree.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And then we do have a council hearing listed.
Okay.
All right. We have a request for waiver of penalty and interest on property tax. I believe Mr. Carl Robertson is here from Columbus State University to make the request. And is Mr. Britt here from the Tax Commissioner's Office? I see him. So we'll let you start and make your request for the penalty and interest refund. And then we'll let Mr. Britt present his conclusion. And then it will be council's decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for seeing me tonight. I come to request waiver of tax penalties and interest for two properties. During 2023 and 2024, there was property transfers from the CSU Foundation to CSU, so going from a 503(c)(3) to a tax-exempt status. Unfortunately, the tax exemption was never filed. And the bill was not paid. Recently took possession there. And when we discovered the delinquent taxes, we immediately paid them. So the total number with taxes and interest for the two properties was approximately $112,000. Of that, about $18,405 was taxes and penalties. So we are current on our delinquent taxes and just asking for a waiver on the fees and penalties.
Commissioner Britt? If you would tell council the requested refund amount and that you verified that is the correct amount and what your findings with respect to the code section were.
Good evening. As the gentleman said, the properties, the application for tax exemption was not completed, which made those years in question taxable. The tax bill was mailed to the address of record. In accordance with the Georgia law, taxes did not get paid. Penalties and interest did attach. Those penalties and interest do total $18,405.3.
And um.
Uh, there is a question, Counselor Crabbe?
I was, I was trying to hear what the penalty, what the um wa, so they're asking to waive eighteen thousand four oh five?
Correct.
So these are prob, these are properties.
The legal standard, Ca, um Counselor Crabbe, is that it's council's discretion to refund it or waive it if there is a finding that there's no evidence of gross or willful neglect or disregard of the law. And I believe the Tax Commissioner has concluded there was no such.
Correct, there was, we found no gross willful neglect.
There's motion second to approve the refund, uh any discussion, other discussion on that? All right, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Carl, thank you for your patience. Okay, we do have uh Mr. Broadwater Senior who has requested additional three minutes on the clock. Mr. Broadwater, please.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, I, I'll use that full three minutes. I just want to make sure that I'm clear. Uh I visited three places today, got up at four, four AM. I went to uh Genshin Elementary to watch kids and greet kids that they're taking the standardization GMAT testing. Uh left there, went over to a place called Virginia Arms, I don't know if y'all know what that is. Uh but uh got out of the car, went over to some young men and talked to them and said, would you be standing on this corner if you could go walk to a job? Dialogue back and forth, bottom line, they would not be standing there. So this is what I said to this council. Don't get in the way of progress. Uh I've been here twenty-three years, I've seen uh a couple of councils get in the way of progress. We have a tremendous opportunity to develop South Columbus, but we can't just stop there. We have to continue. And you all, with your expertise and your influence, you can do that. You cannot tell me that you can't. Uh after I left uh Virginia Arms, I went stopped there and talked to some folks, I went over to a place called, you've probably never heard of, Elliot Walk. Went back, got out my car, I saw some vets there and um they were sitting out, eating meals. And the, 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 um, the owner of the, the facility, I asked to talk to her and said, what do, what do you guys do here? I said, I'm going to talk to the council tonight. If there was anything that uh you would ask, ask for me to tell them, what would it be? They need funds. If you ever, if you've never been, Google Elliot Walk. They have a um substance abuse program over there, it's called Tomorrow's Hope. And I talked to some vets there, they got some real serious problems over there and they need funds. It's on the south side, it's in walking distance to South Columbus. Folks need jobs. Do not get in the way of progress. Folks need help to get out of poverty. I grew up very poor, so I understand that, that's why I continue to come here and stand here. And I'm gonna do that until there's no breath left in my body. And I, I truly mean that. We've got to help folks. The pizza guy, oh, oh, the judge, when he said, our mission is to treat people like we want to be treated, that was everything to me. Whatever he needs from me, I go to war with, go to war for him.
Thank you, Mr. Broadwater.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you, sir. All right? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye? Any post? We're adjourned.